Okay. Uh, the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna call this meeting to order for Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty-five, our regular work session. It is now six oh seven P M. You can go ahead and, um, do roll call. Councilmember Jones.
President.
Councilmember McCarty.
President.
Councilmember Scott. Okay. Mayor Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Rayner.
Here.
Council Vice President McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Higgs.
Here.
And Councilmember Love. I did call Councilwoman Kearney, did I not? Yes. I thought I did. Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Love has requested to be excused. Councilwoman Love asked to be excused. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Yes. Let the record reflect that he has been excused. Mr. Jones, can I see you tonight? Go stand for a second. Okay. Everyone, we can stand.
Gracious God. We gathered with the shared goal of serving our community. Let us be guided by a spirit of collaboration, mutual respect, and a clear purpose. As we begin this working session tonight, we commit to listening intently to one another, understanding different perspectives, and working towards the common good for all of the residents of Seat Pleasant, Maryland. May our efforts here lead to a strong, stronger, and more united city. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. We can get a motion. So move. Thank you, Councilmember. Any questions? Thank you all. We're gonna move on to our presentation for tonight. Um, Marcus from Lisk, from the two oh seven four three coalition.
City Council. Uh, it's good to see so many familiar faces, uh, back again after the August recess. My name is Marcus Robinson. I am with an organization called Lisk, or the Local Initiative Support Corporation. For those of you who I am not yet acquainted with, um, we are a national nonprofit, um, work doing work in Prince George's County out of the D C office. We do, um, primarily work in affordable housing investment, but then as well as investing in community spaces, um, capacity building, and convening efforts to try to bring some community visions, uh, to reality. To that last bucket of convening, um, I am here to introduce a proclamation, um, for the Declaration of Unity, Legacy, and Shared Purpose of the two oh seven four three coalition, which, uh, signed officially to work together, um, with the three municipalities of Seat Pleasant, Framah Heights, and Capitol Heights, um, on Saturday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, a very short convening history before I, uh, read, read out the proclamation. Um, we have been got a convening since, uh, shortly after I joined Lisk in, in, uh, in May of twenty twenty-four, just kind of around shared goals and, and shared vision, um, of how we can work together and, and what the, what the goals that we wanna see are going forward, uh, and that are, that how we can represent the constituents and the residents of the two oh seven four three zip code, uh, you know, unitedly. Um, so to, and, and then a, a year later, almost exactly a year later, um, we saw a lot of those efforts come to fruition, um, with the actual signing of the, of the proclamation to work together. So just to read the proclamation, uh, the proclamation, a declaration of unity, legacy, and shared purpose. Whereas this town of Capitol Heights, the town of Framah Heights, and this city of Seat Pleasant are municipalities with a proud legacy of diverse leadership, cultural excellence, and resilient communities along the Central Avenue slash Blue Line Corridor in Prince George's County, Maryland. Whereas our communities share common histories, economic challenges, and opportunities for collective investment, equitable, equitable growth, and people-centered development. Whereas the need for coordinated action, intergovernmental partnership, and strategic vision has never been more urgent in the present, in the pursuit of justice, shared prosperity, and thriving neighborhoods. Lastly, whereas our municipalities affirm that we are stronger when we work together, listen together, and lead together on behalf of the people we serve. Now, therefore be it resolved on this, that on the day of Saturday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, we, the undersigned elected leaders, do hereby proclaim the formation of the two oh seven four three coalition, an intergovernmental alliance committed to four major things. Advancing policies and projects that center resident voices and uplift community wealth, promoting cultural heritage, healthy environments, and sustainable development, leveraging our collective power to pursue resources, partnerships, and investment, and creating mechanisms for shared governance and planning across our jurisdictions. Be it further proclaimed that this coalition stands as a living promise to our constituents to honor our past, act boldly in the present, and build a future grounded in equity, kinship, and pride in place. Signed in unity at Framah Heights Town Hall, Prince George's County, Maryland, Mayor Monroe, uh, Mayor Stewart, and Mayor Porter. Uh, and I would just submit this for, uh, to the city council. And if I may flag one last thing, um, for the, uh, related leave as part of the Blue Line Corridor Coalition, uh, we will be hosting a, a, uh, public press event to publicly launch that coalition. Um, tentatively, we're holding it for Monday, uh, October twenty-seventh, or Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, at either the Seat Pleasant City Metro or, uh, the Capitol Heights Metro. We're still working, uh, with Ramada on the site plan, but that will be a public presser that we're currently calling a pop-up cafe, and that would just be to, uh, you know, bring some, some media attention to this public launch of the Blue Line Corridor Coalition so that we can get as many people involved from across the corridor as possible.
You said the twenty-seventh?
Yes, the, the twenty-seventh or the twenty-ninth of October, and that will be at ten A M. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to our citizen comments. Mrs. Ball, do you have any requests sent in, or if anyone's online, or anyone here would like to stand and state your name and what ward you live in? Okay, so we do have a few, um, citizens online. We did not receive any citizen comments in writing. Citizens, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. No hands have been raised. We have a, we have a citizen in, in our audience tonight, if you wanted to stand and say anything or just.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brianna Meadows. Um, I've been a resident of Seat Pleasant for about six years now, um, and I'm in Ward five, um, so this is my first time attending a meeting, and thank you for, uh, Councilmember Higgs for having me come out today.
Thank you for coming. We're gonna move on to our reports this evening. Mayor Porter, you're the first one up.
Thank you, Council President. Um, my mayor's report can also be found in board docs, uh, for your edification if you'd like to read a regular work session for July the seventh. I attended the African American Mayor's Association and A C U Consortium, uh, meeting on July the ninth, and the Progressive Back Caucus Planning Meeting on July the ninth. Also, the public session, uh, July fourteenth, the Historic Preservation Meeting for July fifteenth, a Civic Plus Meeting on July the twenty-second, and Community Kinship Coalition Meeting July twenty-second. Did I turn that? Oh, I turned it off. Okay. Silver Tech Solutions LLC, July thirty-first, and the weekly executive staff meetings Tuesday, on Tuesday. As far as events, I can, uh, attended the Self Foundation Barbecue Cookout, which is a great event, uh, and so forth. Uh, it was their first one, annual one, I look forward to attending in the future, as well as having, uh, additional participation by the, uh, the remaining of the council and other citizens. The Maryland Murrells, uh, Sip and Dip on July the twenty-sixth, and I wrote a qu- a proclamation for Quinton View, Bassian, N. Madam President, that concludes my, uh, report.
Your August.
My August report would be the regular work session. Uh, we went into reset, we, we decided we're going to recess, uh, at a public, uh, the Black Chamber of Commerce meeting August the first. Uh, the real estate team, I had them in because we're looking for people who really wanna invest in our city and come into the city and, uh, and actually buy in our city. That was on August the fifteenth. I can, uh, attended an L G A C Maryland jurisdiction meeting on August the twenty-fifth, and of course, I've been attending the weekly staff meetings, uh, that we've had weeks on Tuesday. I attended a, what's called a thr- Thrive Thrive Jazz in the Park on August the first. It was, it was a really a, a nice event. Uh, uh, the attendance was exactly stellar. However, I anticipate that the attendance in the future will be nice. We had people, residents from outside our area that were very pleased with, uh, how, how this event was pulled off, and they said that we seem like a community, a place that they'd like to be a part of, and certainly we are seeking people that wanna be a part of our city as we expand our board boundaries. National Night Out on August the fifth, Hoops for Peace on August the ninth. I did a Gear Up for Success, a Back to School Drive and Community Impact Day, August twenty-third, and the Seat Pleasant Elementary School, the First Day of School, August the twenty-sixth. Also did a proclamation for Little Libraries, which we had an opportunity, uh, to, uh, be there for the kids, uh, to come out, uh, when we did have an event there for the dedication of the Little Libraries, uh, that was put on by, uh, brought to bear by our esteemed Councilmember Kearney, along with some assistance by our esteemed, uh, Councilmember, uh, McCarthy. Uh, we got some good press on that, which enhanced the aspect of the city, so it was a very pleasing event, and I think the people, I got comments from people all over the, uh, you know, the, our county as well as other, uh, bordering counties as to, uh, what we did for that particular day. Thank you for that. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Uh, Mayor Porter, uh, I'm curious to know if we can get some follow-up for the real estate team meeting? We don't need to right now, um, because we have a heavy agenda, um, but just to know the outcome of that.
Yes, they, um, would, they want to come in and do a presentation to the, uh, to the council, with reference to, I initially, I had, uh, come in contact with them at a meeting in Montgomery County. They were doing several things. They were part of that team group. They talked about several things, all the way from, uh, uh, getting people, uh, that they're, uh, trying to think of the exact word for it, miss, I mean, there's a word with reference to them, getting their records expunged. They had teams who were doing that at that particular, uh, meeting, as well as the real estate participation and how to, uh, about the whole process of putting themselves together to buy a home, uh, as well as hold on to homes that they actually had. They will be, uh, they've been calling quite a bit to get into the, uh, to us, but I know that the council is on hiatus for the month, but they're looking forward to coming here to do a presentation.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing any? Thank you, Mayor Porter. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to our, um, city manager, our interim city manager, Demetrius Harris, and we are asking that, um, you give us a rundown of everything, and if there's any questions that the council have, since we've already looked at the agenda, if you have questions for a particular department, then we can do that at that time instead of each department giving a full.
Uh, so, so good to see everyone. Um, I hope everyone had a wonderful, uh, break in August, the break that wasn't a break, technically. So as we start our, so as I start up a report, we'll give an executive overview, uh, pretty much of some of the things that are going on in the city, uh, over the last two months. I do wanna shout out the Clerks Department, first of all, because while we were on a recess, they still managed and handled several committee meetings, several projects that were going on, um, uh, critical to the city, and so, um, that can only be done through their office. So I, so I certainly appreciate Mrs. Ball and her team, uh, Ms. Crump, for all the hard work. Um, so I'll start off with our Public Safety Team. I'm very proud of them over July and August. We still could have continued to see double digits decreases in crime over the last two months. That has been assisted. One of the things I do wanna point out about our officers, while we're struggling in some staffing areas and recruitment and retention that I'd have mentioned in the report, um, the staff is still making it happen, right? So when we see multiple jurisdictions talking about crime, different areas throughout the state or even through the region, these numbers, our police department has, have been able to sustain and kind of hold down for our city far beyond, uh, beyond COVID, right? And these things were, we were seeing during COVID and even after COVID, COVID nineteen. That's, uh, to the reflection of the hard-working men, uh, in our police department. Um, one of the things in my report, uh, we did highlight is, if you noticed, that automated enforcement, uh, processed over thirty thousand speed citations that, over time, we were, uh, out. That is something that is very hard to do, um, and so it requires a police officer to be involved when it comes to, uh, speed citation and over eight thousand, uh, red light citations. So with them being required to not only do their jobs and patrol the city, they're still, every squad is still participating in our automated enforcement program and helping to make sure that we're monitoring and keeping track of, uh, what needs to be done. Uh, over the last couple of months, environmental justice, of course, has been very responsive. They, uh, in Mr. Barber's report, he gives a more detailed, uh, analysis of some of the, um, some of the calls for service they have provided. One of the big things that we are still working on, uh, from my office and, and kind of keeping an eye on, are the, uh, the sidewalk and road repairs. Uh, we were able to take a walk recently to some areas of Ward one that we've talked about, I think even last year, some of the sidewalks, um, and even the alleyway. Uh, I did a walk over there, um, behind Bing's Farm where, uh, Shirley's is, and we noticed, like, even the speed bumps that were there were kind of broken up. The alleyway needs to be kind of fixed, but I did highlight some of the estimates that we received on some of those repairs. G Street and Greg Street are still a major priority, uh, for us, that I think that we're gonna have to tackle. You just drive over there, you'll, you'll kind of understand what I'm saying, but, um, you can kind of see that asphalt or some of those projects kind of have a price tag. Um, we, I have access to Barbara, we need to look at multiple companies that are already on the state bid, looking at those costs. While we're still trying to work with grants to go after additional monies to kind of help support these projects, we need to make sure that if we decide to go forward with any of these projects, that we have multiple bids in place before we do so. Uh, but I would tell you, like, Greg Street is, is looking at just two half, it's probably a hundred grand. That street actually needs some curb repairs, things like that, uh, and so Mr. Barber's team is working on it. I do, uh, wanna say I appreciate them for really jumping in place right before school started and getting those crosswalks painted on the Seat Pleasant Elementary. That was extremely helpful, um, and he's working now with the team to train our team. And we used to, uh, contract. He took the time over the summer to actually train a team. We bought the machine, trained a team to actually go out, be able to perform these tasks. And so if you noticed, uh, over the summer, we did M O K Court. We did, uh, the lines of some other areas in the city, and so they're working hard to take on that task and try to keep up with the normal, uh, getting the grass cut, the normal routine stuff and taking on additional product, projects. So I would, I would say I appreciate that. Ms. Early did, uh, send me a text message. She was extremely appreciative of it. You know, not only does E J D support those projects, but we gotta remember, they are supporting all these events, uh, setting up and breaking down, those type of things. So, uh, to have a team of twenty twenty-five, still a lot of work, still getting it done, so I do appreciate that. Um, when we talk about our finance department, I know Ms. Logan will ask, uh, there's something in the agenda tonight about a financial accounting system that we're, we have looked at. There was a presentation done before the senior staff at one of our meetings that talked about, that will help us kind of streamline our purchase requisitions and managing our budget process a little better, so you all get to see that tonight from our finance department. We're still working hard on the F Y twenty-four audit. That has to be a priority with us, and that will continue. One of the things I think over the next couple of months, from my office standpoint, that I think that we need to jump on is some of the things like the county manual, payment procedures. Government Affairs has already kind of brought that up. I know we're gearing towards that, but I think over the next couple of months, those are one of the things that need to be a priority before we go into this fiscal budget, or even start preparing for fiscal budget, which I think, uh, is, is extremely important. Um, in July, we had a, uh, uh, we had a meeting when it came to the sixty-five hundred Central Avenue and the potential development there. That development is, is really, uh, I want to quote our, that, because that development is gonna be huge for our city, um, and it really could not happen without the city being involved, right? Because the grant that we've applied for, we, we had to be involved directly with the ownership to get that done. Um, and so I appreciate everyone who participated. Town Hall, we had about the development of rezoning. We're really hoping to push our support for, um, if you notice out front, the marquee is close. We're getting there, um, so, uh, we were waiting on a delivery as of Friday, so we're just waiting on for the delivery to come in, and we were able to run the conduit to kind of get, uh, get that going. So as soon as it's delivered, I expect just a couple of days, it should be, uh, up and running. Um, we've had some new hires from the H R standpoint. Um, of course, our deputy clerk, Ms. Carla Crump, is here, um, and we appreciate her service. Uh, we did hire a H R manager at the end of July, but as you all know, unfortunately, he took on another opportunity to work elsewhere. He is helping us still currently transition, the transition. We have a couple of interviews set up for the next two weeks with potential candidates. Job is posted on our website for those who are interested in applying. Um, we are still continuing with our people manager training. Uh, we did, we did do, uh, for like a first-line supervisor training for, for staff. Um, Mr. Barber's team did, they go to that, um, which we received really positive feedback. The goal is to make sure that our staff, they're supervising individuals, that they're properly trained, that we have documentation to show that. I know that that was one of the things, uh, that was pointed out in the performance audit, and so we're coming up with standard procedures. So if you're supervising individuals, that we have those documents in place to show you what the, what our expectation is from a city standpoint. Uh, other than that, my report is in, in board docs. Public engagement, um, okay, very lengthy, um, month with quite a few events. One of the things I would like to point out is Thrive Fridays, uh, the last one we had in the park, uh, extremely successful, in my opinion. We had two bands that performed. Um, I appreciate those who were able to come out, but just a couple of things. We had Thrive Fridays, we had the movies in the park, with the Gear Up for Success for our Back to School event was a huge success. Um, National Night Out was hosted by the Police Department, the basketball games that, uh, the Police Department played there against the team, the Hoops for Peace. Um, Seat Pleasant Elementary School also hosted a block party along with Carmody Hills we, uh, we attended, and then, of course, the Economic Development Town Hall. So over the last, you know, sixty days, it's been a lot going on. I think, uh, sometimes it's easy to forget, because we go from event to event, but it's a lot for one, a one-man show kind of right now, getting it done, but I do appreciate how the team is collaborating to support one another for these events. Looking forward to the fall, um, and Ms. Draper has a lot of exciting things to, to kind of bring up. One of the things that I listed, some of the things that I listed as my goals for, um, this, uh, obtained from my office standpoint, I know, I know from my standpoint, uh, the F Y twenty-four audit was still mainly a priority of the goals, that some of the things that I, you know, put an eye on. Uh, I do want to work with Ms. Roto on a grant manager plan. I told you, I believe that we could be going after serious funds over the next year. Um, we have, I know we have a special session, September fifteenth, for the strategic plan, and that's gonna be ongoing with council approval and implementation, and how that work is gonna be extremely important for my office. Um, we're working on the new monthly report format implementation. Government Affairs actually up to take that on, and Councilwoman Kearney is working directly with me on some edits on what that should look like, the jump, the jump shot on that. Uh, I told you about the county mayor for camera policy, that's one of the things that I think we need to work on, the road repairs. That will still continue. Um, I know our acting chief is working on, uh, some active recruitment plan, but we're still looking at trying to fill Economic Development Director. Uh, Government Affairs, they said they wanna take a look at the job script and to see what we can possibly do. Uh, we have not received any applications recently. I think we had a couple of interviews a couple of days ago, um, and we decided not to go with those candidates, um, but Government Affairs did agree to just kind of take that on, to look into it, and so, uh, we look forward to that. Other than that, I'll take any questions, and our departments are here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Um, council, if you have questions, um.
Good evening, Mr. Harris.
Hello, how are you?
I have a couple of questions.
Um. Great questions.
Public safety. So what else are we doing to, like, change the driving behavior? And, uh, every month, you know, we get this large number of citations that are being issued. Um, I asked for a very long time, over a year now, that we do a social media campaign about, like, safe driving and things like that. You know, the incident that we just had recently, uh, which was outside of city limits, but still involved our police department, and I'm trying to figure out, like, what else can we do to get the word out to people?
So I do, uh, support, uh, your safe driving campaign, some of the things, I forgot what city we looked at, but you said, me and Hayward, all of us have talked about it. I think that's still important. I will say that it has fell by the wayside because of staffing. Staffing is extremely low. Some officers that we do have are Some officers that we do have are still required to take leave. They have vacation or they have mandated training to the state that they have to get to. And so even to the point where captains and the, uh, acting chief covering shifts. Uh, so it kind of, it kind of fell by the wayside. I do think that that's going to be key going forward. Um, we'll work with Ms. Drayford maybe on something. We can come up with a pamphlet, something like that, and maybe we can push out. But I, I like the idea with it, we had talked about where we did the videos, something.
Right, because I would also say, you know, maybe get with, um, the neighborhood schools. You know, everybody's in the social media now, right? And so you may be able to get some students to volunteer to help with that kind of stuff. As long as you know, you can provide the facts and information and they can just put the videos and stuff together. Because like I don't, like the only reason I agree with speed cameras and red light cameras is to change the behavior, right? And so if the behavior is not changing and we're just getting money off of it, it like, I don't, I don't know, like it, what's the purpose?
So I would say from, from just an analysis internally, I think inside the city, we are, we, we see changed behavior, right? We see like stop signs, things that is, but you got to remember, I think the last study we did years ago before we, um, in Central Avenue, they were talking about almost a million cars were coming to the city. Million cars coming to the city that was heading to D C. I think we're seeing that because the things are going on in the federal government. So I think a lot of it is those who are traveling to C Pleasant and us being part of that gateway to D C, which you don't know as day, you ain't saw it down, right? And so I think that's one, I think that's one of the things. I do think internally, I do think we still have some areas of opportunity here on Addison Road, uh, definitely. Um, and me, uh, stuff and Hayward were talking about like possible solutions, possible solutions to that. But I think the campaign may be, uh, one aspect, one aspect of it, but I'm open to, I'm definitely open to, I, opening the ideas because I would love people to see the educational to the, to the program.
So we, I mean, we can talk about it offline because I don't want to, you know, make the meeting go too long, but, um, I just don't want, I don't want that to fall off. And, and that could possibly fall under the E three initiative, um, because there may be, you know, a local college student or somebody that's in the social media. That's like a major now. Digital marketing and stuff, so like that may fall under E three. Um, the next question is kind of public safety slash E J D? Um, do you know if we're able to use, I know we can use red light camera money, but do you know if we're able to use speed money for some of those roadways and sidewalks? Uh, because aren't they safety concerns?
Yeah, uh, yes. And so in the budget, that's kind of, that's already how we have broken it down. So if you see the ground maintenance, the tree removals, um, those do fall into those categories. Um, I will say that the labor from the overtime on events, covering shifts, that has to go to it. I don't know if, just my professional opinion, I don't know if we have the funds to solely allocate to that and still be able to cover what's already allocated in the budget. So we need to kind of possibly make some adjustments if that was the case. I think the, the key is going to be to go, go after that community block grant, which we used to get to do all these repairs. It's, we never stopped getting them because of the audit. So we need to go aggressively go after those funds in order to support that project, support a lot of that project. So you see the prices there.
And so, uh, to that point, what about the highway user revenues?
They, uh, I'm going to double check.
I mean, I know, no, it can be used for that for sure, but I'm asking like, are we, have we, have we received any highway user revenues? Like, was that factored into the budget? We received sixty thousand dollars. Oh, this fiscal year. I was about to say the whole year, we received sixty thousand dollars, not even, okay. All right, I'm gonna move on. And while you're standing up, no, don't sit down. Um, do you have a projected timeline for the audit? So December twenty twenty-five. Thank you. And then the very last thing, public engagement. Can we get an update on the newsletter? I know sometimes it goes out, sometimes it has to be handed out. Um, I have some residents in my neighborhood who like swear by the newsletter. And so we had to cancel an event because they felt like it didn't go in a newsletter and they didn't get it in time. And so we can't have an event. And so I just want, for those people who are heavily dependent on the newsletter, like what can we do to help you to get it out every month consistently? Because I know it's not always you, sometimes the printer, sometimes it's us not getting our stuff in in time. But like, what can we do as a city to make sure that it's happening every month?
So, so I think, um, Ms. Drayford can come up and kind of answer more to that. I think one of the concerns I have is, um, finding a smart way to get the newsletter out better. Um, so we talked about maybe always sharing the link on the app and, and, and people registering to get it. Because we're getting, we're spending a ton of money on it being sent out and getting a lot of returns from it too. Um, and so I am from just city management, I'm concerned about the cost. Um, we had had, had, had had a conversation about the consistency of the newsletter. Um, we were, we're currently in the process. We've, we, I think we've, uh, narrowed down a local printer now that we could possibly use. We were using somebody, I think in Minnesota before, uh, before I came city, city manager. And the, the, the delay on it, I think it was almost ten to fifteen days. So people, so by the time we actually got it or we submitted it and then got it back, um, it's kind of the end of the month. It, it was, it was kind of sporadic. And so, uh, we started immediately looking for local printers that we can support. I think we've kind of narrowed down one or two that can possibly, possibly do that. I, I want to find a more affordable way to do it though. I think the five thousand a month and then the extra four that we're almost spending in some cases is a bit much. Um, and so, uh, I do want it to be consistent. I think that could be consistent from the councils of which, what the expectation is. But I would like to see a more cost affordable solution than what we're currently, uh, how we're currently, currently, currently spending. Also, I think one of the things that we should do is add you all, maybe on your calendars for the submissions. Uh, I don't think you all have that now. We do with the department heads, but I think you all may have stuff that can be submitted too. Um, I want to make sure the content is there. And so what I did notice when I first ca- came in as the interim manager was that some of the content was repeated, uh, repeated after month. And if we're not having necessarily content that newer content that we can share, I don't want to waste the money and just keep sharing the same thing. And so, um, a good idea I think is to have you all involved in that process too. Because you, you have things that we could possibly share or put in there or ideas that can probably help us with, with some of the things we're putting in. Because one, uh, I know like public safety, you know, how many times can you say slow down, things like that, right? Or, um, uh, I want us to promote events, events better. We're talking about timeline or how we put events out there, you know, is it going to be thirty or sixty days and promote it that way? Uh, but to have a consistency S O P that kind of explains that. Um, but I'm open to ideas, you know, do you think, uh, from a, from, just from the elected official standpoint, those who live here, you think we should be sending it out every month? You feel like that's important, okay?
It's absolutely important. So the push to make it a link and have people go online. I have residents who don't have the internet. I have residents who have flip phones. So even if they use their cell phone internet, they, they can't download apps, they can't do those things. So they really rely on that paper newsletter. Now we may have an option where maybe they need to come up to city hall and pick it up. We print a couple and we leave it here and they could pick it up. Or they could call up here and we could deliver it to their house. There's many different options, but I don't think that we should stop printing it. And I do think that it needs to be consistent.
So I think, um, if we do that, we would still do the link, like, so we would still have it available digitally for anybody.
Yeah, that's cool for, uh, as an addition, but what I'm saying is,
Think it's important.
It should not be in place of.
I got you, yeah.
I think I have two things, but back to the newsletter. If we were to just try to go to the option of having it virtual and then folks picking up printed copy, we will need to make sure that it's like a phase out, um, that people know consistently for a couple of months. Just to make sure like it's not a hard stop if you do choose, uh, that pathway. And then because we do have a lot of policies coming out and we do have a lot of process changes, I'm wondering if it's smart to say like, these are the new processes that we have and you spotlight one each time so that folks can become familiar with how to do something. So they become more like guides for folks to learn how to do what the city is trying to go towards versus just stopping.
So one of the things that we talked about was, um, instead of having like our normal public safety walks that we were doing, that we actually targeted smaller areas in the city and did door knocks. So we show people, when we do these door knocks, we show people in our walks, but with you all as, as elected officials, we would say, all right, we're going, let's say we hit the va- the whole valley one, one day, right? We would go to, to these doors and show people, all right, you have the app. Let's, let's register, let's register, let's get you registered, show you how to use that. And so we can track the data on how many people our new users were getting, how many people were engaging, um, and, and doing, doing it like on a smaller scale. Um, and I think that'll help too. So when we're going to people, we say, we're showing them, all right, we can give you text message updates, but we're actually physically touching them versus just doing like the generic walks like we used to, but have a targeted campaign for the walk. So I know we talked about a couple of months ago recycling, right? That would be part of the, one of the campaigns, right? With the pamphlet that will, uh, draft pamphlet, that we, but I want to physically touch people, not just walk it like physically touch and on a smaller scale though. So maybe, but we might go out at six o'clock in the evening and just do one street, right? But have a targeted campaign to eventually hit the entire city where we're looking to see, uh, how many new subscribers we're actually getting on the call them all, text them all. How many people are we showing how to use it? And then we can really engage and use that information if we decide to do another technology for seniors or see what, see where we are. I just really getting that one-on-one personal connection that we possibly could. Uh, I think that may be, uh, may be the answer in some cases, but I, I understand.
Yeah. I mean, even if you phased out and started doing door hangers where it's the top three things and people can know what to do to come get it. But anyway, that's more the team creator side. I would say the cost, you said five thousand a month and then sometimes it's extra four. What's the extra four? Is it typical?
So typically, okay, so typically with a newsletter, it is about, it'll be anywhere from three to four thousand dollars a month. And then it's anywhere from two thousand dollars to send it to actually mail it. So there's a cost to print it and then there's a cost to mail it depending on how large the newsletter is. And so when Mr. Harris mentioned, um, that we were kind of going through and like, I've been going to different printers trying to get like estimates on cost, like what's the cost if we mail it? What's the process if we, cost if we get it in D C and the city has our own, uh, kind of stamp to mail it? Some, and then with that process, right? If, even if we had our own, um, to mail it for free, let's say with, um, the post office, it can take anywhere up to twelve days to mail it. So it's all of these different things, I guess, and trying to make sure that we get it out to the residents efficiently, but then also making sure that we're responsibly, responsibly with it.
So the extra cost was just not the printing cost, you meant the distribution cost? That was the extra per month, depending on how you distribute it.
There's a cost to print it, like everybody charges you a cost to print it and then a different cost to mail it. And depending on how quickly we want to have it mailed, that, that cost changes.
No, I understand that part. I understand that part. I, I was trying to get at the five and sometimes it's four, but it sounds like the sometimes it's four is because sometimes we walk in and sometimes we get them to send it for us.
Sometimes, and then maybe if we add on four more pages, like it has to be a, a certain amount of pages for it to print. So depending on how many pages it is, it changes the cost.
It just changes on certain situations like, um, you know, I think one time we did like backlaws, uh, letter that was, I'll be honest with you, didn't like, I wish I wanted to look, you know, so.
I understand, it's not a process, that, I was just trying to get, is it a process thing that we need to be concerned about? But it's not, that's more what it is, print, distribution. That's okay, yeah, that's good enough. And then, uh, I had a question for, um, uh, for E J D, um, but I mean, they were responding to like two hundred and eighty-seven service requests, but then, um, safety was thirty-nine service requests. Are we saying service requests are the same thing as like the bulk, um, request or like work orders? I'm considering those the same thing? We're not, okay, so I, I read that to be the same. Okay. And then, uh, I did notice that from, from May, well, even when we look at like the July numbers, they were like five times what the previous, uh, month was and then two times before. Like it seems like it's leveling now in terms of yard waste. Are you seeing that there's something different in our process or is it something different that residents are doing? Like, are we, uh, approaching it differently that we're seeing like these high numbers?
Um, talking about yard waste?
Yeah, like I was just seeing like the.
For yard waste is always going to be.
For your report and making it easy for me to even think about these things.
Yeah, so for, for yard waste, I put it in there because I want you to see the numbers. Um, it's seasonal. Some, some, when it's grass season and the grass growing, we get a lot of yard waste. Um, that's the grass clippings, that's the leaves. So like fall coming up, yard waste is, the numbers is going to change dramatically.
Okay.
And for the service calls, um, each department does different service calls. Well, so for safety, his service calls be all the wires you see in, in the city. We got to stay on top of the Verizon, Pepco, and we trying to get all the wires cleaned up.
What I'm trying to understand, when I see two eighty-seven, I'm trying to figure out if this, if this department did thirty-nine, is it because you only had thirty-nine requests or did you respond to thirty-nine, but you had a hundred? In which I'm, I'm thinking about backlogs, does that make sense? So I'm trying to understand what I'm reading in that way, so I just thank you for it.
Yeah, some of them I've responded. So most, it's really, most of the requests is I try to, we turn our reports in on the twentieth. So I try to get them to get used to doing it from the twentieth to the twentieth so we can get the full month numbers. And so it's, 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 it's requests, it's, majority of them is requests.
So are those thirty-nine of the requests completed?
Is that a hundred percent? Is that a hundred percent of service requests?
Oh, are they completed? No, no, that's just how many service requests he did for the month. Yeah, so what I try to do in the back of the report is put all the work orders and he should be putting up there what was completed and what was incomplete.
Okay.
Um, attorney, you're done?
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Scott.
Um, I just had a question why E J D was up there and also why you up there. Um, for E J D, is it something wrong with the, uh, equipment far as for cutting? Because in my ward, I haven't seen cutting almost a month now. So I'm just checking if you guys backed up or?
So like I said, cutting is seasonal also. So right now, and if you notice, the grass is growing slower. So we was doing cutting some areas two times a week, sometimes three times a week. As it's colder in the morning, the grass is not growing as fast. And I know some areas we've been working with N C C, a lot of the things, areas we've been cutting is not actually C Pleasant. So I've been working with N C C, we've been finding out a lot of the areas we was cutting is not actually our, our property.
Uh, on C Pleasant Drive, you know, where the story is, they've been catching up and cutting their part, but then the city hasn't been cutting theirs. It's been almost, it's going on a month. And also by the, um, the funding and fit part, that's been overgrown as well. Not talking about the fence, I'm just talking about the grass itself and that's the city responsibility.
So I know the C Pleasant Drive one, that's one of the areas that we found out that, that wasn't actually our property. The diamond that we was keeping up with, um, I'm a work with N C C, they, they let me know that that's not our property. They showed me the, the line where we start and stop. So that's why we stopped cutting it because that's. And then I would, uh, double check on, you talking about cabin branch? And I, I, I go do a ride around and, and check up on cabin branch.
Also, no, 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 I'm done with you. Thank you. Um, so the app cost, what is the cost of the app?
So it's a combined cost because we use the N C C system. Got rid of the N C C system originally costing us ten thousand a year. We got rid of that and it's combined cost. What was the total for the? We, we took one system for the ten thousand dollar system and we, we removed it. So the N C C system is buying to it now. So it took two purchase records, one of some, some, some about public safety, I can't remember that.
Okay, so this is the cost for the city app, right?
Yes.
Okay. And how much usage, do you know the usage as well? I just want to know versus. See if it's worth, yeah, just to see if it's worth spending the money. And especially when it comes to, because they had it before and it didn't work. So that's why they canceled it before and to bring it back versus passing out the newsletter that will go directly to the door. I think that's more important.
Um, and that goes to like the, that goes to the smart city, uh, concept and understanding the data. I don't think that we've, uh, post COVID, we've always done a good job collecting and understanding the data. So, uh, let's pull those numbers and, uh, I think even with, with the new strategic plan, it requires us to do those. To kind of look at subscribers and what, who we're actually sending that. So, uh, that's definitely on the map.
Uh, to go back also with the passing out the newsletters. Uh, I know one time we talked before and maybe need to revisit in reference to the schools and getting the residents, the young teens to, you know, volunteer to pass them out for school credit. So we need to probably look to that. I know my son would be willing because he helps me all the time.
Oh, good evening. You talked a little bit about the streets. Is it, I guess we're gonna have these, some of these streets foot, G, Ada, Greg. Some of these streets are, I guess, what are we, September? So it's gonna be next year before we get, before you get started on any of these streets, correct?
I think for me, Greg Street would be the priority, but I think we can still knock out Greg.
We feel good to get one of these done by this year, you think?
Still in there, but also, um, doesn't have to be just the street. Remember the sidewalks and stuff, we, the process. So we think we can still knock out, possibly knock out certain areas. It's just, it's just the cost that we're really trying to make sure we're getting the best bang for what that may look.
And this wasn't in your report, but I just wanted to update, uh, the council, if you can update the council and the citizens, on the construction of the laundromat that was proposed. Is that, what's the update on that?
I believe that is still going forward. Um, we were, uh, me and the mayor and Ms. Higgs were on several meetings with, uh, Park Plan about that. I think they made, had to make one adjustment. Oh, sorry. Um, I think they had to make one small adjustment to it, um, to the plan, but it's still, it's still coming. I think the owner was, uh, did reach out, um, I'll have to verify, but I think, or somebody from Park Plan talked to the owner. Cause I did want them to potentially come to a meeting or something like that, but it's still coming. It was approved.
I'd like to thank EJD, like to recognize them tonight.
You're welcome.
On the, under your leadership, of course. Um, for the parking lot at fifty-nine hundred Martin Luther King, they finally got some patches down there. So I'd like to give you.
Well, I think EJD did the, uh, did some of the work, but they got tired of, you know, you say EJD.
Oh, NCC, I'm looking at NCC.
But I guess they got tired of the fines, so we appreciate you.
Thank y'all for staying on top of that and pushing that through. Even though I saw in the report, it's still some modifications that they need to have. And I don't know the particular business, but it's near Got Rice, whatever that business is. Can we work on them next? Because that parking lot is.
We, we talked about that a couple of months ago in, in, in the council meeting, but I know there's a different owner. And, uh, we've already found, I think there were no court. Didn't we talk about that in like two meetings ago?
Not Got Rice, but that, that's, uh, right down from the, um, best one, is it best one? Yes.
Yeah, we've, I think we're waiting on court, courts. Uh, um, one of the things I will say is that we're doing a much better job in our lean process. And so if we're doing the work or we're, we're intervening, we're able to immediately get the leans placed on some of these properties, which kind of wakes up some of these owners pretty quickly. Um, and that, that was a process we kind of locked in. So we're lean, I, I mean, we're cutting grass in certain properties, we're leaning that stuff. That, so the city be either owning it or they're gonna pay us for it or something.
She wants to say something about that.
I just want clarity, uh, is there, uh, exactly who parking lot, because I talked to the, say that the middle is not theirs and so just clarity on that part.
It's his parking lot.
The whole entire.
He, he's trying to, uh, push it off as saying it's a thoroughway between MLK and C Pleasant Drive. So he doesn't feel like he should be responsible for it. That's his property. How, how, how he stops cars from driving through his property is, is up to him. But, uh, NCC, he's fined, he's been fined four hundred dollars a week now until he gets into compliance. Because we've given him warning after warning after warning, conversation after conversation, it's not going anywhere. So that's right with him.
It sounds like it's gonna be, uh, C Pleasant Shopping Center real soon. We'll have to, we'll have to worry about that. Um, what's the business? Five nine four four is looking to do a, a presentation, um, and I'll bring that to you guys in a couple of weeks. That was a tobacco shop we shut down. Um, one of, I, they did send a request asking to reopen. Um, and put some parameters in it. I denied that request. But, um, I did have a meeting with the shopping center owner to talk about another business potentially coming in there. Um, but we're putting very strict parameters of what we're looking for. And so, one of the things I think that we talked about, uh, with, uh, you one time was talking about what does grocery really look like? And so they're willing to come in and do a presentation, uh, about a mini grocery store, or something that really benefits the city. Um, and so the owner did come to me, um, he's interested in working with, uh, the, the council on, the property owner is actually working on the council on what we're looking for. I told them anything with tobacco will be denied, but if they're looking to, uh, bring produce or something like that, that, that could be beneficial, uh, we're willing to, uh, look at it. So, um, uh, just, uh, stand by for some emails because they want to come do a presentation. Um, and we had a conversation earlier this last week about them, uh, coming in and looking at what can go there instead.
Before you, let me jump in right quick. Does he own any other tobacco shops in C Pleasant?
This, this particular owner owns that entire shopping center where the Dollar, is it Dollar Tree, Dollar Store? Dollar Tree. He owns, he owns, he owns that.
The one that they closed down? Because if he owns any other tobacco shop in C Pleasant, in my mind.
The, the property owner doesn't. The owner of the tobacco shop owns other tobacco shops, not in C Pleasant, but other, other, quite a few other municipalities.
Okay.
Um, and so we denied their request to come back to C Pleasant. Um, there was a lot of issues there, but they set up multiple meetings. I met with their attorneys. Um, I denied their request. I told them if they even issue, if they get another business license with the same names, we're denying it. But I think we can work with them on bring, I think it's a good opportunity to work with them on bringing something that we want there and that location. And so the property owner is all for it. Uh, and I don't want him to lose that monthly income, right? I want him to make sure he's still making his money, but I said, let's work together quickly on something we can potentially bring there. So, um, sta- stand by for something. I will talk, I mentioned grocery. I'm missing, uh, mini grocery or something that we need, but if you, if you all have any ideas, please let me know. But, um, they are willing to meet, uh, and they, they, they emailed me several times. They came to the city hall last weekend. We, we kind of talked about, we talked about it.
They will be clearing out that school.
Yes, that, that's, that's, that is the goal. They opened, I mean, they can go get more fines and we'll be shutting them down. But, um, uh, pu- public safety and, um, NCC have done a really good job of shutting down these businesses. Super Beauty been closed, was closed for a couple of weeks. They just opened back up because they weren't, they weren't in compliance. And so I, I think we're, we're there. We're, and they know that we're not tolerating, uh, trying to say the professional word for, uh, crazy businesses.
What's, what's the status with the one that's across the street that I skated down?
Say that again?
The other twenty-four across the street?
Is that where Shirley's Corner is? Uh, I haven't even seen them open. The, the tobacco store with Shirley's Corner? They open?
Not every day.
It's probably limited? Okay, it's kind of, uh, but where, where are we with the probate case? They're, they're gonna be finalizing that shopping center, right? Like, uh, so. I was hoping that we, that, that case would be settled because there's a house in the valley that's tied to that probate case. And we're trying to get that settled as soon as possible. Um, but I know their fines are being issued and, um, you know, I hate to say it, but we might end up being real estate agents, oh, owners to really get these businesses, uh, in, in compliance and then bringing in stuff that we, uh, need. I mean, I know we try to stay away from that, but that, that's been held up. How long have the house been done like that?
Thirty, over thirty years.
Yeah, that's, that's ridiculous.
Yes. I have some more questions, not related to that at home. Um, interim police chief, uh, Hayward.
Great questions, Mr. Jones.
I'm sure. Intraim police chief Hayward. I read, uh, your report. Um, I was kind of distressed on the condition of your headquarters. Um, we know what can be done long-term, get a new headquarters. What can be done short-term? What can we do to get those conditions where they're workable? Because I wouldn't want to work in those conditions and I'm sure our officers don't want to work in this.
We're doing everything possible. Like I said, I want to give a shout out to EJD because his team does come in and do as much beautification and fixing up that we possibly can. We have to understand that that facility is at its end of life, not a building trailer. And they have lifespans and they're at, at the end of life. Do what we can with what we got and that's what we're doing. It's unfortunate, like, that we, uh, have cocaine by today, got our meter.
I will tell you that I'm grateful that when I was appointed interim city manager, because I don't have to deal with the road is. And so, um, so I appreciate the, the acting chief for really, uh, taking, taking on that task.
I have just a few more, uh, council president, just a few more. Um, back to NCC, um, I know I've been in conversation with both of you and you're doing a great job. The commercial, uh, vehicles parked on our city street, um, is that just concentrated in my ward or is it throughout this city?
It's actually every ward. Um, and when it's brought to our attention, we try to address it. We can't catch everything. But when, when, when the issue is brought to our attention, especially with, uh, we have commercial, there's a trap the trailer that we're dealing with off of, I think off of Baltic that we're dealing with too. And there was a dirt truck back here off of sixty-ninth that we were dealing with. So we've had issues before and we've addressed them as, as best we could. Some have come, some have been compliant, but some we're still trying to work with.
Yeah, because we had a dump truck on the top of Seventieth. Um, are the, can we find these folks or, I don't want to find them, but they keep.
So, um, like I said before, when I spoke before, we try to educate you guys. Because a lot of them don't realize and don't know that you can't park commercial vehicles in residential areas. And if they do know, they're being, for lack of better words, ignorant about it, like you haven't told us before. So before we try to educate them and let them know, you, you have to move these vehicles. And we give them a chance. And if they don't, then we proceed to the next step, which is fines and also toes.
Um, just a few more, um, EJD, um, when we had the, um, yes, I've been here all my life and a couple of times we had where basically it had a community trash day. I don't know if that happened under your watch. I was gonna ask you, what did that look like?
We, we did one, we did one award too a year ago.
Um, is it possible we can do that again? Is that too much expense? Is that too labor intensive for your staff? I mean, what can we do to have another community?
We can do that. Um, that event was sponsored by Councilwoman Love, uh, who took on that cause. Um, so we can possibly look into that, uh, and we can provide you the cause.
Thank you.
And our department heads are always available during the week for meetings, if you, um, for any, um, detailed questions.
Council president, I think that's all the questions I have.
Oh, listen.
I know, I know councilwoman, councilwoman attorney, your hand up. Councilwoman attorney, I think you had your hand up first and then councilman Raynor.
I have like ten. But no, it's just one, um, I just wanted a quick update on the opera funds. I saw the grant report, so I'm clear on the use that's put there. But I know there was a deadline to, uh, allocate or dedicate funds. I just wanted to know like, and we also said we were setting aside some monies before, for, um, a potential audit. So it's just like a high level of where we are, what's our status and what we're looking like.
So we've completed that audit. All of our opera funds have been already allocated. So they're there. Everything that was already allocated has already been allocated based on, um, our last meetings last year. Um, and so, um, the audit, when did, what month did we complete the, that single audit? We just, like, uh, May, the single audit, the, the single audit was done. I believe, uh, you all have copies of that. Um, but our, everything was already alloc- allocated. It's pretty, it's dealt with.
Okay. We were concerned about that. You're no longer concerned?
I'm, I'm not, 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 uh, disjuncture. Mr. Raynor?
Only one question, uh, uh, Colonel G Street and, uh, Holly Park, probably is, has that been put, uh?
Which sign? The actual street sign or, okay.
Because a couple of residents saying people come in and can't find G Street and said the sign has been missing for a while.
So, Mr. Barber, can you double check on that? We did replace the actual street signs throughout the entire city. I will tell you that some of our signs have been vandalized, even the stop signs have been vandal, some of them have been vandalized. Um, and like somebody stole the solar panels on one. So if you see those type of things, please let us know. So we can, um, we can jump on it. We're still working on signage though. So not the street sign, but like the stop signs, the, the speed signs, those things are still, we got a quote for about sixty thousand dollars on to do those replacements. Uh, I'm asked, I asked Mr. Barber's team to break that down. If we do maybe by ward or something like that, or maybe we buy actual signage, I have to break that down a little more. But we did get a quote for those signage and we're looking to do that a, as soon as possible. But I would like to see a more organized plan before we implement anything. So it's still signage needs to be done, but not the street signs. So if you see an issue with the street sign, we need to jump on that because we replaced all the street signs last year.
Good, thank you.
I'm sorry. I know I've been in loop with, uh, Hayward, but I also wanted you to be in loop as well. Just to come up with some solutions because I get a lot, a lot of reporting. And reference to they're coming down the one-way, so, and I'm just trying to come up with some solutions on how we, we, we can come up with.
Where, where at?
Um, Seventieth Street.
Okay.
Uh, Cabin Branch being reported and Seventy-first Street.
Okay.
Lot of residences reporting to me how they just keep coming. They're sending videos to my phone and everything and I've been sending them.
Okay.
So can we make sure that, I mean, it's okay to bring them to the meeting, but when we're getting those reports from residents, that we're one, showing them how to put it in the app or putting it in the app for them? Because you're asking about app, you, you know, usage. If we're reporting in the app too, we can pull data that way. So she's able to go and see, oh, we got this many reports, you know, for NCC stuff or for trash collection or for whatever. So we can be inputting data into the apps as well. So, and I could, I'm not, you know.
Uh, I just, the app does help us track it a little better. And so making, making sure tickets are closed, things like that. So, um, it's easier to, I think in some cases, they're calling the front desk and we're putting it in for them, um, if, if need be. But it, it, it does help us track it. And so it's like a checklist for us. Um, and it's easier for me from a man, from just a city manager standpoint to go and look at that, um, if possible. So, um, but there are a couple of streets that I do think that are concerning. Um, and we'll, we'll talk again with public safety, um, later on this week.
I don't know if you all brought it up, but are, are we, have we gone away from the Texan Mall situation or?
No, no, we got them. We're on it.
I need a new phone plan then. All right, thank you.
Yeah, we, um, we combined, we had stopped for a little, for shortly when we combined the apps because we had to do like an integration type of thing. But it's, it's up and running now.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Uh, I would like to thank the staff for the hard work even up through the, the month of August, what you all have done.
I appreciate you.
Uh, the reason why I say that is there's been a lot of compliments from surrounding areas as to the work that you're being done. And that's essential for us if we want to grow. Growth is, uh, when we talked about the fact that we have to find alternate means of, uh, the city having, uh, monies come in. It can't be all placed on one, one specific department. Uh, so it's essential that you all maintain and keep up the good work. It, it is, uh, we're, we're getting in some decent compliment and I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate y'all. It's a team effort. So our elected officials play a part of that too. So it, I mean, it's a team thing. So we appreciate, we certainly appreciate that. There's a lot of projects going on, a lot of different things going on. And so I may not mention them in the meeting and things like that. Um, even when I looked at the report right before the meeting again, I realized that I left off a couple of things that are, are still actively going on. Um, but I do appreciate the engagement. I think, uh, I appreciate the relationship. Let me say that. I think we have a better relationship with our elected officials than we've had in a very long time with the senior staff. Um, and I think that the staff has a better relationship with each other than I've seen in a, in a very long, uh, very long time. And so, um, we're getting there. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting there. And, and I do appreciate, um, the support that you all provide to, uh, our staff. And I appreciate our staff, certainly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our council committee reports.
Council President, I'm sorry. We have two citizens that walked in and missed the citizen comment portion and wanted to know if they could ask their questions.
Economic Planning and Development and Housing Committee.
Okay. We had a meeting back in August, uh, going over the, um, strategic plan. If I can get Ms. Crump and Ms. Wall to read the report for me. Mariah's read, yes, summarize.
So the, um, committee met on August 6th, um, virtually, um, to review proposed strategic plan. They reviewed the mission, vision and core values. Um, the committee did agree, um, to keep the mission, vision and core values, um, the same. But they also recommended that. They reviewed what. Yeah. So they reviewed, they reviewed and agreed to keep everything as it, as it was previously agreed upon during the strategic planning workshop. Um, they also reviewed the, um, sustainable economic growth. Um, the committee agreed to include the 20743 collision as a threat due to the limits of funding. Um, Ms. Hayes stated that she will be contacting Ms. Roder to get additional information about the, um, 6500 Central Avenue project. Uh, Councilwoman Kearney, I'm sorry, proposed adding a financial pillar for, to the SWAT analysis to highlight the city's financial strength. The committee agreed to establish a procurement goal focused on financial, um, physical responsibility with the emphasis on equity and access. Um, the committee also referenced the master plan being reviewed and aligned with the 2035 plan for adoption by the county. Yeah, I think that is a good overview, good summary of that meeting.
Councilwoman Love isn't here, um, but I was just going to say, uh, Ms. Wall, if you could just give a summary. Um, I know that, uh, of course we met to talk about the strategic plan. I don't know that we need to go into detail about that, but one of the other items from the additional meeting is later on the agenda. So can you speak to that?
So the committee met on August, Friday, August 29th to, uh, discuss the proposed, um, Edmonds Ethos Finance Accounting System Software. Um, that is a recommendation from the, um, Chief Financial Officer to implement the program as Paris gave overview and a report. So the report will, I'm sorry, the, the system will include general ledger, financial reporting modules, procurement processing and payment and other, um, financial tools will also be included in that system. It, it is at a cost savings, if I may say, um, that he stated that it would be about 10,500, no, I'm sorry. 22,540. Same committee met. And I just want to say that for the record, that it was actually another meeting as well for July 31st. So they did have two meetings. Um, Governmental Affairs, I know you all have quite a bit.
Oh, you have a question? I just wanted to know, is there a time where we're going to see the draft, the finance manual? No, it's mentioned in here as being completed by the end of the year. Is it like a date that is going to be presented?
Accounting manual is a very involved process. Uh, we are, finance is in the process of developing, writing the procedures, which would be a part of the overall manual. But we have as a part of our, in the budget to submit a, uh, request for proposal. Because you need various people to work, compile a whole manual. But we've started the process to help mitigate the process when later on. So there is, there is no timeline to stick a date for that accounting manual, if that's what you're asking. That is a goal for us to do for this fiscal year.
To create the timeline or?
To revise, to revise and bring it before the council for your review this fiscal year. That's one of our.
Governmental Affairs.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Government Affairs met, uh, a couple of times and, um, our agendas are pretty hefty. So I'm just going to highlight the things that will appear later on the agenda and/or things that were, um, follow up um, from the council as a whole. So the compensation study, which you'll see, um, later on, uh, where basically they did a market data analysis where they looked at, um, municipalities similar in size or similar in, in, um, staff to look at, you know, what we're paying our staff, what they're paying their staff. Um, and then they came with recommendations on what, you know, what we should be, uh, paying our staff and, uh, how we could phase in, uh, like a, a pay scale, if you will. Um, that is a very abbreviated version. Um, but you can take the time to go through the nuances. Um, in addition, uh, we were tasked to look at, uh, best practices in terms of, um, clerk departments, uh, dealing with elections and, uh, ethics. Um, and so you will see an attachment on here that has a list of municipalities who, um, where the clerk's department is involved in, um, one or the other or both. And so just to give you an overview, they looked at 74 municipalities. Um, out of 74, 43, um, clerk departments were involved in elections and ethics boards. Um, six where there were no election involvement, but ethic involvement. And then 25 where it was just elections and, and no ethics involvement. So the overwhelming, um, number of municipalities that were reviewed, the clerk's department is very much involved in those processes. Um, so, uh, I don't know what you guys want to do further with that information, but, um, that's the information that we gathered, um, in terms of what best practices are. So while we know that a lot of people are doing it, doesn't necessarily mean it is the best thing, right? When we look at why they're doing it, right? You gotta look at costs of, you know, having additional people, um, work the elections and stuff like that. And so I think that from the people that I spoke to, that's the overwhelming reason why the clerk's department, like that's just the function of their department to do it in-house. Um, but I definitely encourage you guys to do additional research and talk to other municipalities. Um, but that's, that's where we are with that. I have, you want to speak to?
Well, I was.
I mean, I have three more reports, so you should, if it's something about that, you should say, go ahead.
So did you talk to, um, or how many municipalities did you talk to where the clerk department is not involved at all in any of the board or the elect? Did you talk to any of those municipalities?
So. So out of this, the 74 that we spoke with, they all had some involvement. They were either involved in both or one or the other.
Okay. So you didn't talk to anyone that where they weren't involved in any of the process? Or, or the elect?
Did you speak to anybody? I know what I read, but I'm, I'm going to ask. Did you speak to anybody specifically who did not have the clerk's department involved?
So in accordance to the report that is attached in the system, um, there were several, there were a few municipalities that did not have the clerk involved. So when it comes to, let's address it from ethics. When it comes to the ethics commission, depending on the size of the municipality, it may not be required by law, by the state law to have an ethical mission. So that report basically details what municipalities do that the clerk's department was not involved. And as far as, um, the elections, most of them, the clerk's department is always involved with the election. So both of them, so the numbers provide the response that was given from either speaking directly or reviewing the charter and/or other policies that they may have had it on, had on their website. So, um, the numbers in that report reflect departments or the municipalities that did not clerk's department.
So, so there's a column on here that gives like explanation for like the ones that have, you know, who do have it, don't have it or whatever. It's my understanding that we have this number because that's who either responded or she could find information on.
Thank you.
So literally out of the 74 people, everybody had some involvement. Of the people that she talked to. Right? There's 157 municipalities in two, two special taxing districts. So about 50% of the people were able to give a response in the estimated time that we requested.
As collaboration, what we can do is go over, uh, the limitations of the department of the involvement. That's what we.
Correct. And we, we can.
I just want to make, I just want.
Make whatever.
For the people at home to understand that. That's what we can do.
Correct.
After knowing this information.
Correct.
Thank you. Are you?
However, the, the data supports what we're currently doing. That's that. Uh, any more questions on that report? No, okay. Moving to the next one. Um, and those two meetings were in July. The next, uh, meeting, we largely spoke on, um, we did some follow-up with the compensation study. Um, where we've got some of our answers, our questions answered to be able to provide the full council with what's in the, uh, what's on the agenda. We also did the Goodwin Park rental recommendations. So we have been speaking, um, as a committee about, um, resident versus non-resident fees, um, renting parts of the park, renting all of the park, whether you can rent the dog park, whether you can rent tables and chairs, whether, you know. So we're working on all of that, um, to be able to bring that forward to, uh, the full council on what that looks like. Um, with breakdown of, of all the, uh, charges. Um, so, you know, we're going to look out for that.
How many parts of the park can be rented at the same time?
What do you mean at the?
Four parts, is it three parts?
So that's, that's what we looked at because like right now, for instance, there's an issue with the soccer area, right? There's a football team that wants to use it and then there's a group of people who wants to use it for soccer. And so because they haven't necessarily been able to, um, come up with the best solution, we now may have to consider like renting the area, whether it's a fee or not. But like you had to sign up to use it because, so I say that to say you've got, you've got that park, you've got the basketball court, you've got three different pavilions and you have the dog park.
But we never, we don't rent three parts of the park out to three different entities at the same time.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure we could, I mean.
Don't do that currently, right?
I don't know that three people would ask to.
Somebody might want the fields, somebody might want the pavilion up top. Some people might want the area down by the place.
I'm sure if, if that came, public engagement would let them know, hey, we have other people renting. We, we're, we don't, we're not saying you can't do it. Um, it doesn't happen often. Um, but we didn't make any provisions where it is something we can't do, if that's what you're asking.
I was looking at, you were, you would have to charge three different prices if someone was only getting this part.
Correct. Correct. It's just like, you know, if you go to a hotel, it's different party rooms or business rooms in a hotel. They would be different amounts because they're different sizes and different amenities. And yes, I have been an advocate to rent the dog park. Um, and I say that one because there have been residents who have been complaining about issues of their dogs being attacked. Um, and I know I personally had a party in the dog park where I had, uh, a large number of dogs there. But we were, there were owners with the dogs. So I can only imagine if, you know, everybody else decided to come to the dog park that day and there was all those dogs in there. So like, um, that's why I suggested that maybe we look into that. Um, and then there's another aspect of the dog conversation that'll come to you guys later. That's that. And then we met again in August. So those two meetings were in July, this meeting was in August. This meeting, we, uh, did a last walkthrough of the employee manual, which we have been working on for some time. Um, and so we had, uh, at the time, the HR manager, uh, had reviewed it and proposed, um, very limited, uh, edits, like mostly grammatical, um, and maybe like HR jargon that we didn't have there. But, um, that will be presented to you guys. Um, and then again, we looked at, uh, chapter 20, which is what I was just talking about of the code for fees and charges. There is another component, um, I don't know if you guys recall, but there was conversation about like EJ, EJD with like renting, um, different equipment or EJD actually put like maybe cutting grass and stuff like that. And so we're working on the formula for that because not only is it the equipment rental, but it's the staff time as well. So making sure all of that is together. So we're, we're looking to revise chapter 20. And so when all of that is done, that'll come to you guys. Um, the boards and commission application language, um, we have reviewed that, um, that'll be coming to you. And then, um, the fiscal impact statement. Um, I had requested that the, uh, government provide a fiscal impact statement for any, uh, for, for legislation and/or initiatives. Um, but I know there's different language for different documents. But basically whenever we want to pass something, we've got to say like, what's the impact to the budget? Right? Um, and it will, and maybe it'll expand later, but right now like, how much money does it cost us, right? Um, ideally it would even say the staff time. It would say, you know, what would be the impact for us making this, you know, uh, passing this law or whatever. Uh, in the state, they do this, there's always a fiscal note, um, that, you know, talks about what the legis, the impact of the legislation. And so because we as a council came together in a strategic plan and said that we wanted to grow our fiscal responsibility, I think this holds us accountable. I know Ms. Logan, it's more work on your department and I apologize, but it holds us accountable. It allows us to be more transparent with the things that we're doing. Um, and so that will come to you guys. Uh, I actually think that's on the agenda later on tonight. Um, we also talked about, uh, employee evaluation system, um, but that will be later. That'll come later on, um, and then monthly reporting, um, particularly for the finance department. Um, I know that we read these deport, reports and sometimes we ask the same questions. And so what we tried to do, um, as a committee was look at the questions that were being asked and tailor the reports to the questions that we commonly ask. Um, the staff make the reports. Um, the staff make the reports every month, but we're the ones that are reading them. And so it's, we need to make them easy for us to understand. Um, and so the idea was to, to, um, simplify the reports in a way, uh, that we can understand them better. So that'll be coming forward as well. Um, yeah. So as of right now, that, that's that. Um, I will say some things are going to run over into October. Um, I don't know who will be on, uh, that committee. Um, however, um, we did create a document for committee transitions. Well, we'll make sure we provide all the details and whatever, um, historical knowledge or data that we need to provide to keep these initiatives going. Um, and then the very last thing was the, uh, personnel appeals board, um, application. Um, we added language to it, um, like about conflicts of interest, um, different liabilities and stuff like that. Um, just trying to be more transparent.
Boards and commission application, we just used, you said personnel appeals.
Oh, well, for all the applications, but this one, the one that's uploaded is the personnel appeals, but it's all of the, it's all of the applications. We just changed the language, um, like I said, again, to be more transparent, um, to be more inviting to folks who may wanna volunteer for the boards and commissions. I encourage all the residents here to apply for the boards and commissions, particularly the charter review. Cause I spent a lot of time on that. Amen. Um, and with that being said, I think that's everything. Like I said, I have a few more things that are gonna come right back when we get to legislation. Um, so if I did not explain anything thoroughly enough when we read the legislation and these things are resolutions, which means that we would be voting tonight. Um, if you have more questions, ask them either now or at that time, so I can try to explain as much as possible. Again, these meetings took place over months, so I may not be covering everything. Um, but if something comes up, uh, let me know. And I you.
Yeah, I see a one hand, Councilman Jones.
Not sure, like you said, who's gonna be on what committee going forward. But one of the things that I saw in the handbook is the comp time off. I would like to have more clarity with that. I'm not sure who's gonna be on the committee, but that's, I've, I've read it about five times a day and I'm still, I'm not, not clear on the comp time and I think that needs to be looked at. Going forward.
Well, I'm glad that you mentioned that because that's one section that was looked at quite a bit. Um, I don't, you might not have been here. I think, uh, there was a big uproar with comp time, um, some time ago, maybe in the last year and a half, maybe two years, um, with staff and comp time. Um, and so I know for a fact that particular section was reviewed, uh, very closely. Um, and it's reflective of what, uh, multiple council members who were here at that time was saying. In combination of what the staff, um, had concerns about. So I don't know if you have a particular part you don't understand that you need clarity on or the whole thing.
What is your, what is your, uh, view on how comp time is handled here in C Pleasant?
Are you asking me to read the policy?
I just need for me and some of the residents out, out there. I, I mean, I read it and I'm still not. And-
So are you-
I mean, when I, when I read that, you can, you can, um, no, let me read the part where I'm not really. Compensatory time off should be provided in lieu of overtime pay only in the event that both the city and employee agree to the provisions of the compensatory time off. Now, as, you know, overtime is governed by FLSA as, as mentioned in this, uh, in the first paragraph. Are we going against FLSA when we're not paying employees overtime when they work overtime? If we're gonna offer them compensatory time? I'm looking at it from that aspect. And then, um, I, I feel, and this is just my opinion, um, as many of you know out there, my background is in payroll. And I've worked for several organizations over my career and we've never paid time and a half to a salary employee. And it doesn't say that here, but it's not clear either. Um, and that's where I'm kind of, I'm kind of confused. I'm, I'm dizzy actually right now. I'm not understanding how it's handled in C Pleasant as I read this, uh, these three paragraphs. And maybe this is not the right time to have a discussion on that. Um, but I don't have an understanding based on what's written here. Um, because if we're paying salary employees overtime, that goes into a whole new ballgame in terms of the FLSA and how that's governed. Cause then we're treating them like hourly employees when you pay them overtime. But I, I just don't have an understanding of how we're doing it during the comp time here. This is not clear to me. There's no clarity for me. May be clear to other folks, but for, for me, it's no clarity. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong in terms of how it's written, but the, the practice of paying the salary employee time and a half. I don't, I don't get that one. I just, based on my experience.
In terms of the time and a half, if I'm not mistaken, that is, the example that we spoke most about was like, for instance, um, EJD or the police department, um, like holiday or, is, did we talk about, I don't know if we talked about emergency, but like the police don't get off, but they're salary employees, right? And so on Christmas, y'all not, they not salary employees?
No. No. They get overtime.
You have exempt and non-exempt.
Alright, I'm talking about the non, no, I'm talking about the exempt salary. Any exempt salary employee-
You talking about like the department heads?
Exempt salary, if they're exempt salary. If you're salaried, you're salaried. You don't get paid by the hour, you get paid by the day.
So you're talking about the department heads?
If they're exempt salary, yes. If they're exempt, si, if their classification is salary exempt, yes, that's any salary exempt employee.
Well, I'm asking him to, I'm asking him to clarify for a reason.
Salary exempt employees, not hourly, not hourly. I'm gonna talk about hourly employees. Cause you have to pay them time and a half. By law. You have to pay your hourly employees.
And that, that has been a practice. But I'm, I'm asking, is your question geared towards the department head?
I'm gonna say yes, if they're salaried. And then, and then this comp time doesn't say who they're talking about. It doesn't say hourly, it doesn't say exempt, non-exempt. There's some other stuff that needs to be put in this, um, in this handbook. You have to be specific on what you're talking about, what type of employee you're talking about.
So-
That's where I'm, I'm just dizzy.
So-
Dizzy right now.
I do know that you're not, so you are right to a certain extent. When you go through the document, while I understand it's a full document and other areas may explain other things, what you're asking is for every area to explain everything. Cause I feel like that's touched on in another area when we make the distinction between the different type of employees.
Okay, that may be true, what you just said, but if I'm an employer and I'm picking up the handbook, it doesn't say that it doesn't pertain to me, whether I'm salary exempt, hourly, non-exempt. Doesn't say that here. It has to be specific.
But what I'm saying is the document is a document in its, in its totality. And it's even, I think, mentioned in here that it, you know, like it said, documented in totality. So one area affects the other area of the document. So yeah, you might take that and say, oh, it says this, but you can just refer to the other section. The idea is to not, if we put that in every single section, the document is gonna be huge.
How can I say this? Um, excuse me?
Are you asking for language to be changed in that section and/or asking for it to be defined in other areas of the document at the top prior to any sections being explained? If there isn't an add specifically, council chair, that we move this discussion to the next council committee meeting.
I was asking you, were you, did you have any other questions on that?
Once, uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kearney recommend that they table it or not table it.
She didn't say that.
She didn't say the word. She said go to the next committee meeting, so they're gonna be discussing adding more clarity. You have to have clarity when you pick up a document. Yeah, and I know-
So she's, no, she asked, do you have a specific, do you have a specific ask or recommendation is what she's asking? Cause this does appear later, this does appear later for a vote.
I would like, yeah, that's when I, when I first heard my mic going, I was saying that I would like to have some clarity in this document with the language, yeah.
Right, so do you have a recommendation for that clarity? We have a couple more things if you wanna jot down some different language.
Do I have something right now?
Well, it wouldn't be a right now because you didn't get the document right now.
Right now, but I'm just saying.
So if you had the question about it, you probably saw that before. So did you have a suggestion as well? I guess she's saying like, yeah, we're talking about it, but did you come up with the suggestion to the concern?
On modifying the language?
Yes.
Yes, I, I have some suggestions. I don't have anything right now.
Okay, well-
But yeah, I do, I will, I can write something up.
Well, that's seven point one, right now we're at four point six. So, you know, you wanna, I got a notepad right here, you wanna?
I know, I'll, I'll kick it back to your committee because-
But you, it's on the agenda to be voted on tonight.
Oh.
Correct. So unless you're asking for it to come off the agenda, you can do that later when we get to seven point one.
Well, let's, let's, let's go zap out when we get to that point and I'm gonna disconnect the meeting.
Thank you. But for everybody else's edification, this document has been reviewed by multiple people. Um, I, I do know sometimes that language is written, um, in a certain way. It's been reviewed. I don't, I don't wanna say nothing because it, it, it's, I don't know, it's an HR document, I just, I don't wanna-
Well, just finish your, your report.
I'm-
Finish your reports for right now.
I'm, I'm, I'm done.
You're done?
Um, like I said, we worked on the document, you know, the folks that needed to see it, saw it. Um, you know, we had a robust conversation about comp time, about how it would work. Um, and so-
If, if you, we'll, we'll talk later.
But that's why I asked if you had a, like if you had a specific-
That, okay.
Well, I just read something else and it's no clarity. Uh, the amount of compensatory time that may be accrued will be capped at the limit permitted by the FLSA, depending on the employee's position with the city. That's vague. There's no, what, what is the cap?
Can we hold, can, hold on one second. Can we hold your questions until we get to that portion at seven point one? So then we can address that at that time and I wanna make sure she's completed her report.
Well, yeah, that's fine. I've just, I just read another sentence that there's no clarity, that's all.
And once you get there, then we'll have more time to really dive into that. But I wanna kind of get through, cause we're supposed to start another meeting in ten minutes.
And, but to that point though, when you, this book is a policy and if we're saying they were going off of like government guidelines that may change every year, you're not gonna see that in the document because then you'll have to come and redo the document every time they change whatever. So sometimes it is gonna be, um, sometimes it's gonna seem that it lacks clarity or that you need a, a supporting document to understand it for that reason, because other things change. Just like, for instance, I was asking, uh, when it came to like the, the fees, right? I was saying that we just put a caveat that the fees will be, you know, adopted during the budget cycle every year as opposed to putting the fees, because then you gotta go back and change that chapter every time you change the fee. So like, sometimes it's intentional, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Not saying that this particular time, because I would have to, you know, like I said, it's been over a span of months, um, that we've been reviewing this document. Um, but sometimes it's, it's- But I you, that's the end of my report.
Are there any other questions outside of that? Gonna move on to four point seven, human services, health and patients.
Thank you. The report is in Board Doc. Uh, we reviewed the strategic plan, sections two point one and two point two and two point three. Um, at a high level, we decided that even though we had some debate over the vision and mission statements, it was minor enough not to adjust the timeline for strategic plan to move forward. And so we, uh, agreed to the language that was stated at that time. Two point two for public safety and community well-being. Um, it was, well, it might need to be that bullet point, second to last, maybe moved to act requested, it might be. But the committee requested that the responsible parties and owners of the goals, um, that are listed in that section be defined, uh, with the departments, so to add some specificity to it. Uh, we also talked about, um, a recommendation from the mayor to provide a memo to the council to request the revision of the committees, in which case we remove, uh, boards and commissions engagement, uh, from the proposed strategic plan. And then for two point three, um, we looked at the community engagement, uh, roadmap. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Kearney, um, we, oh, that's all the committee reports. Before we go into the legislation, we have-
They agreed to wait till the public session so that you all can get-
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're gonna move on to, uh, number five, our legislation for this evening. We're gonna start with five point one. Ordinance O twenty-six dash amendment for the fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay, ordinance number O, O dash two six O two, introduced by the city council, um, introduced on, uh, Monday, September eighth. First reading will take place on tonight, Monday, September eighth. For ordinance concerning amendment fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget for the city of C Pleasant. Be ordained by the C Pleasant City Council that the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget of city of C Pleasant is acted by ordinance O dash two five, dom dash one three, adopted on May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, should be amended to increase the annual audit for the city and subscription service for docu, docu-sign, um, envelope increase for administration. Ex, uh, general fund account title expenditure decrease, decrease the following line item expense account contingency, um, department administration call center five four six zero, current budgeted amount four hundred fifty-eight thousand three oh three. Adjustment thirty thousand, new budgeted amount four hundred twenty-eight thousand three oh three. Expenditure increase of following line item, um, annual audit department council call center five three one zero. Current budgeted amount thirty thousand, adjustment thirty thousand, new budgeted amount sixty thousand. Expenditure decrease of following line item expense contingency administration. The department is administration call center five four six zero, current budgeted amount four hundred twenty-eight thousand three oh three. Adjustment four thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars, new budgeted amount four hundred twenty-three thousand five eighty-eight. Expenditure increase of following line item subscription services for administration. Um, call center five 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 eight, current budgeted amount sixteen thousand, adjustment four thousand seven hundred fifteen. New budgeted amount twenty thousand seven hundred fifteen. Section two, be it ordained by the C Pleasant City Council, having been approved by the affirmative vote of at least a majority of the sole elected membership of the council, should be necessary for adoption. The city clerk should certify to the adoption of ordinance and costs same to be published as required by law and that this ordinance should become effective immediately following approval by the mayor or passed by the council. as required by law, and that this ordinance should become effective immediately following approval by the mayor or passed by the council at the veto by the mayor.
This is the first reading, so.
Just for, uh, Ms. Ball, just for labor's terms, basically we're saying, we have over four hundred thousand dollars currently in the contingency budget for an expense account, and we're asking for thirty thousand first to be decreased from that account in order for us to be able to pay for audit.
Yes.
And then we're also asking from that same account that we take four thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars in order for us to pay subscription fees. Thank you.
Question, comment? To the next resolution? Oh, go ahead.
Is it that we significantly under budgeted for the audit?
No, the, the additional fee is to complete the FY twenty-four audit. During the time that we were doing the budget, we were in the process of FY, completing FY twenty-three, and then we went into the single audit for FY twenty-three. The single audit took extremely much more time. That's a compliance audit, and the, and the auditors had to do a lot of work on their end to meet the, uh, US government Office of Management and Budget compliance requirement. So, because that audit took so long, we could not start the FY twenty-four audit in time. And so the budget was already in the process, and so we needed to add money to cover the current audit for FY twenty-four that we're working on.
I know you explained that to us in June, I just wanted to make sure it was explained tonight for that, thank you so much.
You moved on to the next, five point two, okay. Resolution, um, R dash twenty-six O two, introduced by city council, they introduced September eighth, two thousand twenty-five, a resolution, um, to approve the, approve and support the redesignation of the enterprise zone certification of the council of the city of C Pleasant, supporting that the application by the Prince George's County Economic Development Corporation to re-designate the state enterprise zone focus area to provide tax credit incentives, incentives for businesses within the city. For the purpose of approving the application by the Prince George's County Economic Development Corporation for the state enterprise zone focus, whereas the state enterprise, um, enterprise zone focus area has been proposed for an area that includes the city of C Pleasant, and whereas the state enterprise zone focus area is a tool for Prince George's County and municipal governments to promote economic development, and whereas a state enterprise zone focus area would provide state income, county and municipal real property and county and municipal business, personal property tax credits that could be instrumental in attracting new business, new business investment to communities that have been targeted for revitalization. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of C Pleasant support the five-year designation of a state enterprise zone focus area within our boundaries, and be it further enacted and resolved that this resolution, being is hereby adopted if approved tonight, September eighth, to take effect immediately upon the adoption, um, by the mayor and council, by the council.
Thank you. Council, you've heard the reading of this resolution, does anyone have any? Oh, you wanna make a motion, I'm sorry, I make a motion to.
I move that we adopt resolution R dash twenty-six dash O two.
A second.
Now, if anyone has a question or comment. By voice, Councilwoman Kearney, if that will work, thank you. Councilwoman Biscott?
Okay, thank you. Measure passes five to one.
Um, I just, for the record, uh, whoever created this map that's attached, can we get them to redo the city web app? It, it, they did a good job. I'm just gonna put it out there, cause the map we have right now is not good.
Resolution, um, number, uh, twenty, R dash twenty-six O three, introduced by city council, they'd introduce September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. A resolution requiring the chief financial officer to provide a physical impact statement to ensure transparency and accountability relating to the annual budget and budget amendments for the city of C Pleasant, whereas Article five, general powers of the city, city of C Pleasant City Charter states that in section C dash five oh one A, that the council shall have the power to pass all such ordinance or con, ordinance not contrary to the constitution and laws of the state of Maryland or this charter, and it may deem necessary for the good government of the city for the protection, preservation of city's property, rights and privileges, for the preservation of peace and good order, for securing persons and property from violence, dangers or destruction, and for protection and promotion of the health, safety, comfort, convenience, welfare, happiness of the residents of city of C Pleasant and visitors there too, sojourn, sojourn and threat thereon, and whereas Article eight, finance of the city of C Pleasant City Charter, section C dash eight oh four appropriations approval, approval states that no public money may be expended without having been approved and appropriated by the council, and whereas Article eight, finance of the city of C Pleasant City Charter C dash eight oh five transfer funds, states that any transfer of funds between major appropriations for different purposes may be approved by the council before becoming effective, and whereas Article eight, finance of the city of C Pleasant City Charter, uh, section C dash eight oh six, over expenditures forbidden, states that no officer or employee shall don't, shield during any budget year expend or contract to expend any money or incur any liability or enter into any contract which by its terms involves the expenditure of money for any purpose in excess of the amount appropriated for or transfer to the general classification or expenditures pursuant to this, uh, this charter. And whereas the city, city of C Pleasant City Council wishes to ensure that the council receives a written physical impact statement on a form approved by the council to make sound decisions about the appropriation and dispersment of city funds, and whereas the city council wishes to strengthen its physical responsibility and resilience through robust financial management and real-time financial oversight, now therefore be by the city, C Pleasant City Council, that the chief financial officer should prepare a physical impact statement with each budget adoption and budget amendment ordinance of, uh, ordinance by the city council, and be it further resolved that this seat, that the C Pleasant City Council hereby adopts this resolution effective if approved tonight, September eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
You've heard the reading for the resolution. Want to make a motion to approve?
I move that we approve resolution R dash twenty-six dash O three.
There any question?
I think the financial impact statement is good, but if you look at all the various legis, legislations, legislation, the financial impact statements are prepared by the Office of Finance and Budget, it's not prepared by the finance office. You'll find that at the state, as well as other man, city municipalities, they have a separate Office of Finance and Budget, where they have certain individuals with certain skill set with management principles and techniques and analytical skills. That is not a document that's prepared in the finance office. You know, while we're willing to do that, I, I am familiar with preparing financial impact statement, but our current staff does not have the skill set. If the council's willing for us to bring on a budget and management analyst, cause there are the individuals that prepare those financial impact statement, we'll be more than happy to take that on.
I, I heard what you just said, so are you saying usually that's independent of the actual department?
Yes. Those statements are typically prepared by the Office of Budget and Management outside of the Office of Finance, cause they have a different skill set in, in doing those type of analysis in order to allow the legislation to see the financial impact on any legislation that you're about to vote on.
Thank you.
So you stating that.
Councilwoman Biscott, can you pull your mic?
On the request of the legislation, and unless an analyst is hired?
I'm saying that currently, the finance office does not have the skill set. I have it, but we would need to bring on a budget analyst or management analyst with certain skill set and, and, uh, abilities to actually do that analysis. That's outside of typical finance department.
Any other questions?
Make sure that this legislation would be effective immediately for the, for the next.
So technically, once the resolution is passed, it's effective immediately, right? But with any policy, you know, you've gotta incorporate it, right? And so, it's effective immediately.
And so, that being said, without the city having the current capacity based on a department head, then this legislation essentially comes with a specific undefined cost to the city. That could be contractual and or staffing, in which case it may need to be definite adjustment, if in fact we couldn't afford it, is what I'm hearing, the implications of the legislation, is that what you're, you're saying, that's what I hear you saying?
Yes, I'm saying that the current staff does not have the qualifications, the skill set and abilities to prepare a financial impact statement. Financial impact statements are prepared by separate departments outside of the finance department. And typically, those departments are called the Office of Budget and Management. If you look at Maryland, the state of Maryland, they have an Office of Budget and Management. You look in the US government, they have an Office of Budget and Management. They are the ones that do the impact statements, because they have a different skill set. And I'm just saying that something, if, I mean, if, if the, the council votes on this, I mean, we will get it done, but we would need to bring on an individual that has that skill set, a budget analyst or management analyst that can work along with me, and we can provide you that financial impact statement.
As we make sure I'm hearing, it, the, the capacity, it's not the capacity of the staff, it's the skill set of the staff, it's the skill set of the staff, because the scope of their work, this is out of the scope of their work in general, because it's not typical for their role, because it's usually a different office, I'm hearing. And then my question for you is, with your expertise.
Yes, there's a difference between an accountant versus a management analyst and a budget analyst. Their skill set and educational requirements are different. Okay.
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying, thank you for that, I understood that.
Sorry.
Given your expertise and the skills that are required to do this job for a budget, that's what, humiliating, humiliating. What would you say the projected contract cost would be for something like this, given that it is specific time period?
I can't really answer that, because that would depend, if you have certain legislation that you, that's, that you're looking to vote on. It depend on the type of legislation, what kind of costs, uh, anticipated costs, there are a lot of variables that go into that. So I can't really answer that, because it's, it's too broad at this time.
Hang on, and because it says impact statement, I think what I'm not hearing is that impact statements that might be formed by the city in terms of what the city would need to know in order to determine what the implications are for a specific ask? I think that maybe we just need to be in collaboration, cause I'm not sure that it goes as far as what you're saying, given that I'm not hearing, but I think I should be hearing from, from, from you right now, but I'm with you.
Thank you. Um, I, by no means, um, pretend to be, uh, a finance expert, okay? With that being said, are you, or any of your staff members, able to read a piece of legislation and summarize it?
Of course.
Okay, are you, or any of your staff, able to say what the current law, our current charter, financial management, uh, financial manual says about the same legislation that you just summarized?
Of course.
Okay, are you able to answer, what are the estimated impli, implications, um, costs? So, okay, let me say it again, are you able to answer, what are the estimated costs? So, if we put legislation in front of you, are you able to say how much this is gonna cost?
No, because that's where a different skill set come into place. Because when you're dealing with a, a budget and you're dealing with analysts, there are certain management techniques that they would look and review and see, well, if we take this approach, this may be the financial impact, and we take another approach, the financial impact may be different. So that's where the variable comes in, that's, that's where that skill set, that ability and that knowledge comes in. Outside of accounting, finance, for the most part, handle accounting matters, where we have certain, uh, government general accounting principles that we followed. Budget managements and analysts, while they have certain principles, there are a lot of management principles that are really, that apply when it comes to coming up with a budget impact statement. They do analysis, if we take, if we take factor in this particular, um, approach, what would be the impact? Currently, our staff does not have that ability.
Okay, are you able, when legislation is put forward, to, I guess it kinda goes into the, the, the same thing I just asked, but, um, are you able to say how revenue is affected, right? So if we say we want to decrease the taxes to two percent on business personal property tax, are you able to tell us what that would do to our revenue?
We can tell you as to whether or not, yes, it's gonna be a decrease, but how does that overall affect the overall city's, uh, activity? Revenues are gonna decrease, so does that mean that certain services gonna have to also decrease? I mean, that part is, is easy, you know, of, of a budget finance impact statement goes beyond.
So the question is specifically the estimated effect on revenue, so you're able to say that?
Oh yeah, we say that, because that's part of the preparing the budget.
Okay, let's keep going, let's keep going. And so the next question is, what is the estimated cost and or economic benefit of the government? Are you able to answer that?
I'm gonna say yes and no. The economic benefit then comes into different type of management analysis, economic analysis. And so, so that's, this is what I'm saying, it's a skill set that we go beyond just dealing with the numbers, cause now we're dealing with economic impact, beyond just something very general.
So what I will say is, out of everything, cause I went through the entire document, okay? Out of everything, you were only not able to answer one question.
Well, if, you know, I, it would have been helpful, I'm sorry.
I'm not done, I'm not done, I'm not done. So you were only not able to answer one question, right? Now, I will say to my colleagues, I'm not married to. Now, I will say to my colleagues, I'm not married to what the written statement says, right? We can go through it and figure out what we want in the statement and what we don't want, but what I am married to is the idea that we need to have some idea of what we're doing. And I know that you can do this, because you did it for me before, when I put legislation forward regarding the healthy food options. You were able to tell me what it would look like if we gave tax incentives and what it would mean for the city. So what I'm asking for, you have done it in the past, right? And I know that might be for one specific thing, right? And I'm not asking you out the gate to be able to be perfect at this, but what I am asking is, that if my colleagues vote on this tonight, and we move forward, we work out the kinks, you see what you're able to do, what you're not able to do, what we might need to, there's some stuff might need to come through a different department, maybe the Clerks Department, or maybe Administration, need to talk about impact, or economic development may need to talk about, you know, the benefits, right? That may not be something that comes out of your department, but this council has made a commitment to fiscal responsibility, to transparency, and to building a structure of government that's efficient. And so, I hear you, but from my viewpoint, the majority of this document you're able to fill out.
And I'm saying, what you're asking for is something you should be asking for, because any legislation that the council review and vote on, you should have a financial impact statement. Granted, we were able to provide you the information when you're looking at, because we went around. I had, I gave direct instructions with the finance assistant, call these municipalities and gather this specific information, gather it, I did the analysis. And so, you need to have more than just one person being able to do that analysis. You need to have individuals on a staff, because you vote on a number of pieces of legislation, and I agree, you do need a financial impact statement, but you need to have more than just one person, me at this point, that have that skill set. We need to have someone else, that if anything come up, it doesn't take away from what the Finance Department is trying to do, to keep the city's finances intact, make sure the financial audits are done timely, you know, make sure that we're doing, and we are doing monthly analysis and preparing draft financial reports. That's something that we're looking to bring before the department, as well as the City Council. We have come a long way and we're doing that. So when it pulls away from my time directly to work on something, it impacts other parts of the department. That's what I'm saying.
Thank God you guys are asking us for that financial management system, that'll free up some time. That's great. Well, I'm done with my...
And you, Councilmember.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman McCarthy and second by Council Attorney. Council, we are ready to vote. If there's no other questions, comments?
Online voting is open.
Measure passes five to one.
Five point four.
Resolution R-2604, introduced by City Council, they introduced September 8, 2025, a resolution concerning requirement, requiring the chief financial officer to submit financial reports to the City Council on a monthly basis, whereas Article 5 General Powers of the City of C Pleasant, City Charter states in Section C-501A that the council shall have the power to pass all such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution and laws of the state of Maryland or this charter, as it may deem necessary for good government of the city, for protection, preservation, preservation in cities, preservation of the city's property, rights and privileges, for the preservation of peace and good order, for securing persons and property from violence, danger or destruction, and for protection and promotion of health, safety, comfort, convenience, welfare, happiness of the residents of the city of C Pleasant, visitors there too, and sojourners therein. Whereas Article 8 Finance of the City of C Pleasant, City Charter, C- section, excuse me, City Charter, Section C-804 Appropriations, Approval states that no public money may be expended without having been approved and appropriated by the City Council, and whereas Article 8 Finance of the City of C Pleasant, City Charter, C-805 Transfer of Funds states that any transfer of funds between major appropriations for different purposes must be approved by the council before becoming effective, and whereas Article 8 Finance of the City of C Pleasant, City Charter, Section C-806 Over Expenditures Forbidden states that no officer or employee shall during any budget year expend or contract to expend any money or incur any liability or enter into any contract, which by terms involves expenditures of money for any purpose and access of the amount appropriated for or transferred to the general classification of the expenditures pursuant to this charter. And whereas City Council of the City of C Pleasant, excuse me, whereas the City of C Pleasant City Council wishes to ensure that the council has access to routine financial reports to make sound decisions about appropriations and disbursement of city funds, so that such matters can be conducted in the best interest of the City of C Pleasant. Now therefore, being resolved by the C Pleasant City Council, that the city treasurer, excuse me, should say, chief financial officer, shall submit to the City Council, or it's assigned that the following financial documents, Section 1 Balance Sheet, the balance sheet should be as the last date of each month, and show list the assets, liabilities and equity of the city. A Assets shall include a detailed accounting of current assets, fixed assets and other assets and total assets. B Liabilities of Equity shall include a detailed accounting of current liabilities, other liabilities, opening fund balances, increase, decrease, and fund balance, total equity, total liabilities and equity. Section 2 Schedule of Budget versus Actual Revenues and Expenditures, the schedule of budget versus actual revenues and expenditures shall list the following, shall list the monthly revenues and expenditures of the city. A The Revenue Schedule shall include a detailed accounting of all city governmental fund accounts by account, including the approved budget amount, the current monthly revenues, the amount over or under budget, and total monthly and total year-to-date revenues. B The Expenditure Schedule shall include a detailed accounting of all governmental fund expenditures by account, including the approved budget amount, the current monthly expenditures, the amount over or under budget, and total monthly year-to-date expenditures. Section 3 Monthly Purchase Requisition, the purchase requisition report should contain the following information, A City Department, B Fund Account, C Purchase Date, D Vendor and E Amount. Section 4 Monthly Disbursement Register, the cash disbursement check register report shall contain the following information, A City Department, B Fund Account, C Check Number, D Check Date, E Vendor, and F Check Amount. Section 5 Report Format, the financial reports referenced in Section 1 through 4 shall be generated directly from the Automated Financial Accounting Computer Program and systems utilized by the Finance Department without alterations or adjustments. However, explanatory information can be submitted as an addendum to the computer-generated report. Section 6 Financial Period, all year-to-date opening and closing financial reporting information shall be on a fiscal year basis from July 1 to June 30. Section 7 Transmittal of Financial Reports, the financial reports referenced in Section 1 through 4 shall be transmitted to the City Council by the end of the month, after which financial transactions occur. Section 8 Other Financial Reports, the City Council made from time to time requests other financial documents not referenced in Section 1 through 4, the content and the format to be determined as needed and requested. Section 9 Being Further Resolved, that the C Pleasant City Council hereby adopts this resolution as effective today, September 8, 2025.
Move that we adopt Resolution Number 4-26-04.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This is the first time I'm hearing about the legislation. You know, the Finance Department was not involved in, this is the first time I'm hearing it, and so it's just news to me. I mean, it's good, I mean, that's something that we're about to do anyway, but I'm just somewhat surprised that, you know, the Finance Department was not involved in the discussion. That's my second comment.
And I will say, as a committee, I did mention sending a memo over, but I think that fell through because we were trying to get it put on tonight's agenda and we were on recess. But I did mention sending over a memo to Finance, but this is a policy, and we did talk about making sure that we invite whatever pertinent staff to the committee meetings, but that was something that may have been recognized late, so I'll accept that. However, the good thing is, this information and stuff that's already gathered is just not presented in this way, so it shouldn't be too much extra work on you. If it is, let us know.
Because that's something that we're doing. Prior to that, the city did not have the capability to provide that kind of information. We're now, the Finance Department is now in a better state, where we are able to provide that. I need to go back and look through all the details, there's a lot of detailed information that you're asking for. It's going to be somewhat time consuming, but we definitely can't do it.
Well, it should be, that when we discuss this in the committee, we discuss if this information can be pulled completely, directly from whatever system we have, so that we're not creating additional work.
Oh, no, we can do it.
So if this stuff can't be pulled straight from the system, then that's one thing, but our understanding is this information can be pulled directly from the system and then you just add your two cents to it on the end.
It's a little bit more than that, but yes. When information is extracted from a system, we put it in a format and present it to you in a way that we think is more readable, but you know, I mean, we can do it. I'm just saying, this is the first time I'm hearing about it.
Oh, don't worry. When we come back, there's a whole new format for reporting for each department, so don't even worry.
Okay, so hopefully you share that with us in advance, so we can just give some input, because we want to make sure that you get the information that you're really looking for, and then looking at it from our perspective, what, how much time does it involve to give that? Can we give that information in a different format? There could be other formats that could probably address some of your concerns.
Well, you know what? If the council decides to approve it and it doesn't work out, we can come right back.
Are there any other questions, comments?
Online vote.
Oh, you had a question? I apologize.
Oh, I apologize.
I looked down and looked down and looked back and I didn't see your hands.
I apologize.
One, I just want to thank you for your making the comment, and it's making me think about what the period of feedback looks like with the city manager as well, in terms of you as the department, you know, making proposals for what you think might be best based on what you see in the legislation. But aside from that, in the document for Section 2, where we're talking about Schedule of Budget versus Actual Revenues and Expenditures, where it says what should be included in terms of budget versus actual, I'm wondering if we could consider language that talks about a comparison from this time last year, so that we can start to get somewhat of a trend. I noticed that in the police departments, and it's very helpful. And so, I need to put that in a specific motion to amend language, and I'm open to suggestions of exactly what to state, but the essence of what I'm asking for is comparison of current to last year.
Are there any other?
So I'm moving that way. I mean, the language...
You asked a amendment.
To include a comparison of year prior. No, year-to-date.
Oh, the year-to-date, okay. So not the full year, the full year, the previous year, but to date of the previous year.
Compares this period versus this last year, very similar to the police...
Your motion is to amend Section 2.
Section 2. B By account, including the approved budget amount, the current monthly expenditure, the amount over and under budget, the total month and year-to-date expenditures, and amount of expenditures for this period and the year prior.
That's to add something else.
Correct. I'm not taking anything away.
2B, Section 2B.
I'm only looking for trends, because in the budget season this past year, there was a gap, and it was harder to see. That is...
There's a second.
Okay. Do you want to second it?
I'll second it.
Can you repeat your motion? Because you said it really fast, and I was trying to make certain that my system didn't do anything. I do apologize. Here's the, create what was already there, and then at the end, added the prior year, year-to-date.
Okay, that's, I have, okay.
This period, the prior.
Go through the addition.
I want to make sure.
Go ahead.
Back there, I'm not saying it, following, is that the person who seconded, you had a motion, same, you know, same person? Can it be the same person?
Yes, it can be. It's open now, so we have to vote on the, set the amendment first, and then go back and vote on the main motion. Measure passes unanimously by the City Council. And let's move to main motion. Okay, the main motion is open.
Yeah, I didn't see it. That's what I was like, huh?
I opened it up, so you don't see it on your screen now. Yes. Yeah, so when we was taking that second, there was two votes there, but there was no other votes, but when, because I opened it back up, so you would have to cast your vote, because it wasn't saved. Do you want to give me your vote? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Bakarney. Measure passes unanimously by the City Council.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. And just for Ms. Logan, we'll figure out whatever kinks and concerns that you have.
Going to move on to number six, unfinished business, the approval of the compensation study.
This came through our committee, but I'm going to ask for Mr. Harris to, I'm tired of talking, y'all. Can you, can you give a summary of the compensation study, please?
Just briefly, quickly, are you all aware that one of the tasks that came up, we started working on the compensation study sometime last year, next phase was as it was for Government Affairs Committee. Next phase was as it was for government affairs committee. It on and presentation. Wanted recommended changes to it. That's what we have there. We talked about a phased, I think one of the things we talked about, and some of the other committee members can kind of chime in. We talked about a phased approach, what that would look like, particularly when it came to public safety. What needed to occur when it came to police department overall as a whole. So you can review it and I'm sure you have any questions.
Uh, is approval of the study or approval of? There was two structures that we talked about. I just want to make sure I'm understanding exactly what's being approved.
Of the steps, because that's what the committee agreed upon, so I can change it and then we can do a refresh. Because that's what you all recommended, right? Steps for? Am the committee recommending?
Yes.
While Ms., you already updated it. Oh, I was waiting for you to tell me if it was. While she's making those changes, does anybody have any comments?
Hi, first, I'm not against having that at all. This came up in committee. My act is for transparency to the council is that we look at it alongside performance evaluation systems and so that it can make sense in context. We were looking at steps versus another method. There was step versus something and there was exploration of hybrid approach. And so I feel as though, because I don't want to put the cart before the horse, I was asking that we consider the performance evaluation system in conjunction with steps so that it can make sense before we have to go back. And once you do something with compensation, I just feel like that could snowball. So that was my take, even though we did bring it forth as a committee.
Do you?
Yes, yes.
My only concern would be that, you know, the projections of what it is over a given period of time. And I'm all for that. But I'm also looking at the aspect of what you're looking at when you have to, as to what it will project out to over a period of time is. I'm seeing that when I look at things, I'm just, I'm only seeing this as a concern, has you projected it out over a period of time as how much or monies will actually come in over a period of time in the years. It may look good now, but as we go down years and the step trees and those parties elevate. I'm just looking at the project. To make sure that it doesn't come to possibly, if there's no additional revenues or money over a period of growth and so forth, then that it tend to possibly bankrupt the city. So I'm only seeing that, make sure that, done that.
Any other questions?
I was going to say that was the basis for my, of saying the performance evaluation system. And this is in support of what you're saying, Mayor Porter. Like I say, I'm not against the step. I think we had a very robust conversation. But if you notice, like, we can go from step one to step two. It doesn't say how many times, is that a year? Is it, you're doing it for two years and then you can go to step three? Like, there are just some questions in terms of like how it would be, how it would live inside of how we evaluate staff. And I want to be fair to staff as well as fair to the city. And it sounds like we also have to have this question now, because our finance department literally just said, the concern you have, we probably don't have that deal set in house outside of one person.
I don't know if the number of hands specifically, but, um, yes, but yeah, we, we have, yeah.
If you can identify trainings that may assist the current staff with getting some of the skill sets that these things might require using the training budget, if it's enough, then I think that might be helpful to you.
The skill set with regard to?
Like the different things that you're saying that only you know how to do, like, like there's money available to, to teach them.
But it goes beyond just that training. You need people with already the abilities, the skills and abilities, and then you're enhancing it with the training. If we're going back to that financial impact analysis, you need individuals that already has the skill set and ability. And the training is just only going to enhance it because now you'd be looking at different areas to add to that.
Any other questions, comments?
And I don't think this says like, like it spells out how we're rolling it out. It's just the first step and, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time. It's the first step and then, you know, it's something to have a baseline off of.
Um, I, I, I definitely agree with a compensation study being done and we got that part done. I agree with the steps. I like the fact that you gave more information on that hasn't been worked out yet or how, but it will be an evaluation to go along with these steps. I'm just not sure if I can make a go for it until I know a little bit more. I need a little bit more to go off of, because I want to make sure that I'm making a sound decision that's going to be beneficial for the city. That's just me. Long term, long term.
So this is basically a wage scale for our employees with step? So so with us losing employees, I think we need something. Um, Mayor made some valid points, but the way I'm thinking, we need to get on our horse and try to raise, beg, borrow some revenue. We need to do our job up here on the council. And there's some things that we can do to try to get some revenue in the city. Bless you. So I think we need some type of wage scale. We're losing the police. Chief's already been telling us all year. Losing HR directors. So, yeah, I may look down the road and say, hey, this is going to cost us if we go forward, but we need to do our jobs, get some revenue in the city. And then this is not even, stuff like this is not even really looked at. Oh, my God, the sky is falling. We need to get some revenue in the city as a, as a council. We need to find ways to do that.
We are definitely working in the right direction. Rome wasn't built, you know, in a day. Um, we still have to make sure audits are completed, so that when we're going after revenue, we're in good standing across the board, so that people will want to work with us, you know? But if anyone wanted to make a motion to approve the compensation steps as it is presented tonight, you can definitely do so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the steps.
I'll second it.
Any other questions, comments? One last one has been open. I'm sorry, motion failed. Okay. Is this something that the council would like to go back to governmental affairs so that they can maybe?
This wasn't government affairs.
Oh, this was just?
This, this was government affairs? I thought this.
I thought it was government affairs.
It was government affairs. So that was the meeting that we met on when you gave your report, July 14th, July 21st. Those were those meetings.
Oh, I bet y'all.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can go back to it. Is there specifically?
I'm asking the council if, how they want to move forward. They, it failed, it failed?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that Jones? I'm just kind of getting a head nod or something?
We previously accepted the compensation study as being valid for the basis of where these steps came from. It's just that the steps were talked about as a method of addressing payment, addressing compensation in addition to another method. And I'm saying that I believe it should go back to committee, because while this is something that most people agreed on from the committee, it was only in the absence of the performance value evaluation system, which is already being in discussion by the city. And so to not have it come back again would be probably a disservice to the city, seeing as though we are already approved.
I'm, I'm for that. I, I just have to get everybody's.
Actually, you have the, you, if you want to put it in the committee.
I would rather it go back to the committee. I would rather go back to the committee and give more supporting information so that everyone will feel comfortable with making a sound decision. As I stated, I would, I am for the compensation study. I, I agree with the compensation study. I just want to know how the evaluation and the timeline on how it's going to go. That would be helpful.
Well, no, I understand. I don't think we were like jumping up and down as a committee. And I feel like at this point, I'm getting the committees mixed up, because all my committees meet all the time. But I don't think that we were like jumping up and down, but I think that we were like, we have the study, this is the outcome, like, let's move forward. So if there are specific asks for the folks that voted, you know, against it, if there are specific acts, if you can say like what you're looking for, send an email or something, so we know, so we know what to do.
I can do that. I will. Is that okay with you all?
I'm fine. I'm just, I'm sitting here thinking, what's in place now and is that working?
Um, the council comes during budget season and turns around three times and jumps up and down and picks a number.
Yeah, so we need, we need something in place.
If, 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 if Councilman Jones is, okay, okay.
I didn't say what I said to say that a compensation study wasn't necessary and it shouldn't take place. I said, it's a matter of how we go about it, okay? I do believe that a compensation study is necessary for us to move forward. I think that we have to look at how, what we do. You mentioned the fact that how we receive our monies. I think that's critical as to how it's going to go on moving forward, okay? But yes, a study, study is necessary. The manner in which we go about the study is, is pertinent. I think that can be hashed out very quickly. Okay, if it goes back in the committee to hash that out, bring it back. But I do believe that a compensation study, I didn't say it was necessary. I do believe that it's necessary.
Compensation study was completed. We had the company to come out and give us a whole presentation on it. So we, we definitely agree.
And there has to be a step process.
Yeah, we're going to move forward to our new business, because we still have another meeting after this. New business, seven point one. Oh, where it is?
Council president? Council president? I thought we were going to give the resident after, after the report.
They, they already asked to go to the public session.
Okay.
I didn't forget. Okay, so we're going to move on to new business, the approval of the employee manual. Who's going to take the lead on that?
I mean, we gave the, the, you know, the explanation during the committee reports. It's something that we worked on jointly with the staff. And, you know, all the folks that are usually involved in those kind of processes. Right. I want to come back to earlier's conversation when you mentioned hourly employees. I feel like we don't use the term hourly here. We use exempt and non-exempt. And I think that might be where some of my confusion came in. What I'm going to say is I move that we approve the employee manual and maybe further review the compensation policy.
There a second? Is there a second? We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, the motion.
The motion is on the floor.
Yeah, my motion was to approve the employee manual and to, you know, review the compensation policy.
Compensation policy.
I'm sorry, what did I say? I'm sorry.
You don't know how long I?
Get your mic, please. Your mic. He hasn't said anything. Yeah, his mic's not on.
Be quiet.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'll second with the definition for, since it was a term about exempt and non-exempt. With the, with definition.
I mean, but I, I, I'm okay with. Either of those languages being the motion. Like, I'm okay with, because the whole idea is to clarify the language. So. I'm okay with, you don't have to make an amendment. That can be my motion.
My second.
Question, comment?
Well, I've already said about twenty minutes on this subject. Once again, exempt employees should not be receiving a dime more than their salary. And you, you talk about fiscal concerns and money and revenue. And that's money that we should not be paying a salaried employee. A salaried employee is, and you can Google it on your phone right now. Oh, you say you don't use salary and, and hourly here. Exempt employees are exempt employees. If, if that's the classification they, they use here. Non-exempt employees. After they work, they get paid by the hour. Non-exempt employees, they're paid hourly. Exempt employees are not paid by the hour. They get a salary. And if you have twenty-six pay periods in a year, you divide their salary by twenty-six pay periods. And that's their gross pay before tax. Every pay. Now, we're paying our exempt employees more than their salary. I don't, I don't understand that. And I don't agree with it.
So there's a definition section, like you said, that specifies the difference between exempt and non-exempt. And so. I don't, I don't really know where the confusion is coming. I don't, I'm, do we need to add an additional document like?
Wha- what's your def- wha- what do you, um, understand an exempt employee is?
So, um, the way we have it is anybody that's not. Covered under, uh, what, what do they call it? Fair labor standards?
F L S A.
F L S A.
F L S A, yes.
Right. So. Anybody that's not covered, they, like, we, we kinda piggyback off of, of that law, like. So there's no difference here in the city. That's why I'm saying, like, the document is a document in total. Like, if, if they were able to, if they. Received the employee handbook, like, they wouldn't just get that one section. They would get the whole thing with the definitions of what exempt is and what non-exempt is.
But under F L S A, are exempt employees paid more than their salary?
I don't think we are paying. Am I, am I, am I not understanding correctly? Can somebody, can I phone a friend? No, I'm, Harris, I'm phoning a friend because I'm, maybe I'm not understanding what his question is. And, and because I've looked at the document so long, like, I'm gonna tell you what's in the document because.
I'm talking about what, I'm talking about what we're doing. That was in the document. What, what practice are we doing? If, if I ask for information on.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Conversations, I can't hear everybody at one time. So. Jones, go ahead.
If I ask for a report of all of our salaried employees, of what they've been paid. Will I see if some, if X employee's salary is X, will I see that or will I see more than their salary?
Wait, wait, wait. He has a question on the floor, so I want somebody to answer. Okay.
Because she, she's saying she doesn't understand exempt versus non-exempt. Exempt means exempt. And I'm. No, I'm asking.
Mayor Porter, can you turn your mic off because in order for Mr. Harris to speak?
Okay.
Um, thank you, Mayor. We were, uh, first page fifteen. Fifteen and sixteen. First to those definite, that will note that. F L S A, we, we don't have any salary. Salary would mean that whether they work one day or they work five, it'll be. It would still be. That rate. We have, we have employees that are required to work forty hours a week. Um, I think the question Mr. Jones is proposing is he's talking about the pensatory time added to. Our confirmed direct. How that is paid out, how that is paid out, how that works. It's defined in the policy, defined in the policy. But, um. Think that if it's going back to Government Affairs to review just that, that could be the most appropriate action. But we've worked on this over a year. And so I think the coun- council's had opportunity to kinda look at it. And Government Affairs really dived deep in it and looked at multiple other municipalities and looked at the, uh, in some cases, the work, work that's being performed. So it's there, the notes are there. I think, um. I think we're maybe getting confused on the language. Time by law.
I understand is the comp time is.
Yes, so it allows us to not only track the, the over it, but it allows the, the department heads to still use it in a certain amount of, use it in a certain amount. So we're tracking it and using it. Does allow for the department heads to request payout after twenty-six pay, if there is a massive over. If there's a over. Most of our departments are using it, uh, by the way, but.
Having to use the comp, like, use it when you get it so that we can avoid the payouts.
Okay, I was instructed to go to page sixteen. Well, I wanna read sixteen first because that talks about the non-exempt employee. Non-exempt employees include all employees covered by the overtime provisions of the Fair Labor Standards Act or any applicable state laws. Such employees are entitled to overtime pay for work required to be performed by the City of Seapleasant over forty hours per work week. Employees placed in this classification may be paid on a salary or hourly basis. So now. I'm even more dizzy because now Seapleasant has salary non-exempt employees. So that means. Our, by reading that, now I'm, I'm less dizzy, but still not agreeable to what we're doing here. Uh, page fifteen is exempt employees. Exempt employees includes all employees who are not covered by the overtime provisions of F L S A or any applicable state laws. Employees placed in this classification are paid on a salary basis. An employee who is employed in a bona fide executive, administrative, or professional capacity as outlined by the F L S A. So. These are the employees I'm talking about, the exempt employees, number sixteen on page fifteen, that should not be receiving time and a half of comp time. Now, if they work, let's say tonight, this is a long night. If they, is it an eighteen-hour day? They get ten hours of comp time. They should be paid. If they wanna take a day off, take, um, eight hours of comp time. They got two hours of comp time left. What we're doing is, as I'm thinking and I'm hearing based on page sixteen, we're giving these folks time and a half.
Is that true?
Okay, so if that's not true, we can go in, vote on the motion. I know it's a long night. And then I wanna comprehensive report on every exempt or whatever that status they said on page fifteen. I wanna report for the last five years of every employee in that classification and their salary at that time. And that is probably not the proper venue to request that information, but I'll be requesting it by email. And I wanna see what we're paying our exempt employees that are paid on a salary basis. That's on page fifteen. I just read the exempt employees.
So the policy requires that. Policy is that they make, they try to make those adjustments. The only time that it will come into play where this sort. Requested paid out. Or the. Have been utilized. They request expression of the city manager. My experience that we allow them to make those adjustments. I would caution the council, though. Think if we wanted to go back to Government Affairs to review that particular part of the policy, that's okay. I would caution because. We have department heads who work well over those hours. What happens when they work over? We're not, we don't have some type of compensation policy in place on what that means. Do they leave at forty hours? Do they stop working altogether? Because then we would lose probably two or three on the, right now, for the week. So I think that we should look at the manual as a whole. My recommendation, I would ask the council to adopt the manual and then we send that portion back to Government Affairs if we, if it wants to be reviewed. And those questions will be the answer. Or it could be worked out, especially if there's issue with the, that language.
And, and Chief, based on what you just said, in that scenario that you gave, where these employees have overabundance of comp time, I would love to see their vacation time also, their balance. To see if they're using that before they use their comp time.
Well, uh, without getting into, uh, without getting into personnel matters, because we're in a public meeting, I would tell you from my standpoint, from my example, I, I lose leave every year. I lose multiple hours. I think last year I lost over a hundred hours of leave and get paid for it. Then lost it because I didn't use it within the twen- the twenty-sixth paper. I didn't have time to do it. So I'm just saying from my experience that the last five years that I've been at Seapleasant, every year that I've been at Seapleasant, I've lost more than eighty or ninety hours of leave every year. Same thing has applied several peo- several other department heads in this room. So. In fact, the city does not pay out for everything because we can't have more than two hundred and forty hours of annual leave. So every year. Multiple people in this room have lost. So. They do it as part of the job and I, they haven't complained about it. That's what I'm saying, like, look at the ma- let's look at the manual as a whole. And let's take those provisions that we want to analyze. We believe that may be a better practice. Back to Government Affairs and let's work that out. That's, that's the option I'm, I think that's where we are.
Well, there is a motion on the floor. That has been. First and second, and this is just questions at this time. So if there's no other questions. Is that something that the council wants to have that portion to go back? It is part of it because you said to review the compensation. Okay, so that is the current standard as right now, okay?
Well, I, I would, if I may, I would like you, in your review, since. Motion to.
That's true. And then whatever, remember I asked what your specific, send it over.
Okay, I'll do that.
There's so much other stuff in the manual that needs to be like. Set for, like, we're operating on a, a manual that's.
Let's move on.
Okay. I think everyone is voting. To have it reviewed. The, the definition.
Well, no, I'll send you with it.
Okay, online voting has been open. Measure pass is five to one.
The approval of the job description is seven point two. Executive assistant to the Chief of Police?
Uh, yeah. So there's several job descriptions listed here. What we noticed was there were some things that needed, needed to happen. Year, uh, sometime ago, there was a adjustment. Environmental justice. So we wanted to make sure the job, that there was a job description available for administrators. This does not fund any position. Let me. Just updates. Potential job description. The janitor one that you see in there is, is we were currently reviewing our janitorial process. We are looking at bids on the cost side contract versus right now. We did have a janitor's, uh, job description years ago, is my understanding from the city. Um, so if we decide to go that route, we want our job description approved and then we will come for the funding request. But none of it, this is not asking for the funding request. The executive assistant to the Chief of Police, we noticed that that was never updated. We did the executive assistant to the city manager. So we've always had that position, but we've never updated the job description. I add this, a generic admin. Eric, job description. We just wanna make sure the language was correct for what the actual job. The, um, the executive assistant to Chief Police is already funded. Um, the administrative assistant to the environmental justice and the janitor are not funded. Updating the job descriptions and then we'll come back for a funding request if we deci- if we decide to reallocate or add officials or anything like that, we'll. It doesn't allow us necessarily hire, but we wanted to make sure the job description was updated before we move.
Let me be clear. The. Executive assistant to the Chief of Police, we have that now, correct?
Yes, but if you look at the job description, it's just listed as an admin. The role is much different. So we wanted to make sure the job description reflects what's actually happening.
And I got too far as the janitor. Admin. Committee review this? The council? Have. Would you? The recommendation is to have it to be reviewed at the, by the committee? Okay. Okay. So in, um, the council would like for these job descriptions to go to the committee, for the Governmental Affairs Committee to review them. So there was, there's, there's, there's no motion on the floor. We'll just move them to Governmental Affairs. Approval. The approval of the variant B thirty-one twenty-five? Who wants to discuss? Hey, what is here? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the best of my ability, N C C has reviewed the variance request that was submitted. And their suggestion to the council is that it be approved. Uh, should be supporting documentation and, uh, board docs for you. Better understand.
Four.
Thank you. We move on to nominations for council president. Motion for council, and vice president.
Nominee Councilwoman McCarthy to remain as council vice president.
Second. Any additional? Hear anybody else? We're going to move on to the approval of the finance budget management. Your motion to approve the new financial.
Um, in Councilwoman Love's absence, I move that we approve the financial management system.
Any question? I have a question. I know, I remember when you first came on, you requested for the QuickBooks. And we updated the QuickBooks along with other that you had requested. With this new system, what's the big difference? Help me to understand what's the big difference.
The big difference is that this is a governmental accounting system. QuickBooks is a system for small and medium nonprofit and other, or for-profit organizations. A lot of municipalities have used QuickBooks because it was, for the most part, nothing else out here. We fortunately stumbled upon this company admin technology. When Mr. Harris saw the city of Green Bell, thank you, budget book. And he said, oh, I like this budget book. And so we made calls and reached out to the city of Green Bell. I talked with the city treasurer and she told me about this system. They have the desktop. What we're looking at Etho Finance will be cloud-based. It's much more efficient. It improves processes. We're able to decentralize a lot of the workflows. The departments can see their own budget. You know, when they put in a purchase requisition and we established the various approval processes. Once that's done, they see what their line item is in their budget. And so it's, it's much more efficient. It improves the processes and it takes finance out of paying bills in bill.com. We have been experiencing some problems over the last few months with DocuSign interfacing with bill.com. Departments have made comments that they have sent purchase requisitions to bill.com to be paid. They did not show up. And so this will totally eliminate bill.com. It will eliminate, you know, QuickBooks. Overall, it would be more effective and efficient for the city. Departments, when demonstration was provided to the executive team, we got very favorable reviews. And so it will truly make the city's process more efficient. I mean, financial statements, QuickBooks is able to pull year-to-date financial statements. This system does that as well and actually does a little bit more. We had a demonstration today just for the finance staff. Because we were looking at other components of the system to make sure that our staff understands, you know, how things should be recorded from accounting perspective. And how we should set up the various accounts in the system. So I think overall, this will be the best for the city.
So everyone in the finance group will be trained on this new system?
Everyone in the city who would have access, approval access, will be trained on this system.
The reason I'm asking is because I know we had had QuickBooks experts that you had also brought in to help do some things. But that person will still be there or they?
He served as our accounting manager consultant. That's who you're referring to, Jerome Adams. He's our accounting manager consultant. He helped us in that QuickBooks conversion process when we were, when the city had NetSuite. City, actually, the city had NetSuite and QuickBooks.
So would that person still be?
He will still be there because we need an accounting manager until we have space to bring on a full-time person. He does not only QuickBooks, but he does the various bank reconciliation, our financial analysis. He prepares the financial reports for me to review. And so he does a lot of work outside of just QuickBooks. And he was also on that, on the demonstration today.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to have a little clarification of the benefit of this new system. You know, I don't want to just keep getting that new ax. Oh, can we get a new system? Oh, can we get a new system? If it's the system or is it the associates that, you know, is, you know, you and the staff that's there? Because we're bringing in other people to help and I want to make sure that it's, if it's a lack of training or a lack of knowledge, as you've stated, if everyone will be able to be proficient in this new system. But you answered me, thank you.
Oh, certainly, certainly.
Another council member may have a question.
Are, what's the plan for the records that were in the systems that we have right now, QuickBooks, bill.com? In terms of those subscriptions ending? And then us being able to transfer the records over, integrate the records, archive the records? It sounds like Mr. Jones was helping you do that with the last system. Is that the same process?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question again?
Bill.com and QuickBooks, what happens to the records once the subscription is canceled?
Everything in QuickBooks is going to be converted over to the new system. And so, you know, that, that integration there is a part of the one-time fee. And so we'll be setting up a whole new, what we call a general ledger system. We'll be setting the system up based on fund. We currently, the city only has one fund, a general fund. We're going to be setting up another fund, a special revenue fund. Because the city is receiving opioid settlement revenue. We're required to set up that. We'll be setting up the system not only by fund, but also by the department, as well as the various account numbers based on the activities such as cash, accounts receivable, payables, liabilities or revenues or expenses.
Thank you. Is, when the funds are set up, it sounds like it's in response to us getting things that now we have to have a fund for. And this system that we're getting, someone is helping to design the system based on the city's needs. Example being the fund that you just said. Are we going to still need those people when we keep getting additional funds being added, funds account? Or is that going to be a skill that our team has as a result of being trained? So that we can respond and be proactive in our own operations?
Would you repeat the last part of your question? I want to make sure I understand it completely.
Yes. The integration is happening automatically, one-time fee. So after that, you said that we are also having a fund be created because we're starting to receive monies from the opioid situation grant. Is that correct?
That's to be one of the funds that we'd be setting up, yes.
So let me ask a different question. Are we setting that up or are we getting support from an expert in the program that's helping to set that up? Do we own that setup?
Admin technology will build our system. All of that is in the price that we're paying. They would work with us until we are fully trained, how long it takes to do that, to make sure we're comfortable with the system. When we had a demonstration this afternoon, we talked about that. They say, we will train you, we will train everybody that's going to have access to that system. This is outside of finance.
Okay, now the question. They're helping to design the system that we are asking for?
No, they're going to design the system based on our requirements. We tell them how to design the system.
That's what I just said, that we're asking for. They're designing it based on our needs.
That's correct.
And I'm saying that the opioid fund is a new need because now we're getting funds. So you're able to ask them to help build the fund in the system for us.
No, no, I mean, that's just another revenue source. In opioid settlements, just another revenue source, just like personal property tax or real estate taxes.
Okay, what I'm trying to get at is when you say they're helping us to, we have to have a fund account and you're helping us to set it up. They're doing that based off our current needs and I'm saying our needs may change. And my question is, are they going to be training based on this is the current system? I'm showing you how to use it? Or is there another admin-specific training where they're teaching you how to take over the design? Should you need to adjust your, the system based on the needs? Or will we have to then rehire them again to be able to adjust the system? That's the first question.
What I'm, in designing a system, you want to be proactive. You want to look ahead. You know, we know some things that the city is going to be encountering. We know we have the opioid funds coming in and the state is requiring us to track those funds separately, what's been done in the past. You know, any other type of potential revenues coming in. You know, there is the concern about, you know, a capital fund.
I guess my question that I'm trying to get at is, will we know how to do the design based on the training? Or will we only know how to operate the system that is designed? I don't know.
We do not, the city does not have the technical skill set to divide, to develop a financial management system. If I, I think I understand what you're saying. If our needs go beyond something that we tell them now what we need, will that require additional work? I do not think so. This system is so diverse that we can do a whole lot with this system. Adding on another revenue source is just a matter of setting up a separate general ledger account. So that, so there's no additional technical skills that are going to be needed beyond developing the system. That's why it's so important that as we be talking with the various departments, what are your needs that you really want to be added into the system? Because it's not only a financial management system, but it's a budget management system as well. So the departments will have access to the system and they can see their, their financial status at any point in time.
So that's one-time design fee, ongoing training. How long do they provide that, if at all? I know you got a training today.
They told us today as long as we need it. And then they also have training on, on their website, which is be free. One of the questions we asked them today, well, do you have any type of self-development training at your own space? They say, yes, we do. So training is something that they provide to their clients.
Okay, and I know that you said we might need someone else on staff. And you said the office would be a budget management office in order to do analysis when we were bringing up the impact statement earlier. Was that correct? Was that the name of the office? In this report that I'm reading right now, based on the subscription, one of the features says budget management. I'm not sure how in-depth the definition of budget management goes here compared to the system that you said is needed or the office or the person that's needed to do analysis. But I'd be curious to know, based on the legislation that was passed today, if we could ask them questions about the features that will allow our staff to be able to do that as well.
A budget management system tracks the expenditures against the budget. The financial analysis statement goes beyond that. Because the budget management system, you're pulling a report comparing actual to budget.
But if you have a system that's archiving data over time, it should at least be able to do some analysis for you. I can't imagine a system in this day and time in 2025 that just giving you reports for you to make your own insights. I just can't imagine that. So all I'm asking is if we can ask them a question about some features that maybe other cities or other clients that they have are using that can help us in this way? Because our system that you all are designing was based on pre-legislation today, although some of the things you said, the office is already planning to do. So I'm simply asking if there could be a question to them, to what extent does their features allow for something like that to happen? Especially because we have AI and all that kind of stuff, maybe, maybe it can be supportive. And then also, council, if we can get a presentation of that budget system, it sounds like it's doing a lot across departments. And we're in committees talking about monthly reports and things for departments. It sounds like there just needs to be some synergy because I really don't want you all overworking for something that sounds like every department's going to have access to something like this.
Yeah, this system.
So those are great points. We actually did have the opportunity, presentation was for all department heads. I think Jones and the mayor were in, was in that first. What this will allow is, it's a subscription. So what it will allow is it will streamline our processes when it purchases. But just some analysis. So I think one of the asks from you all was to look at actuals, date, certain situations. When we're preparing the budget, this system is going to do that. I do agree that before this is approved tonight, we're looking at contractual, so the contract in the subscription. Does the build-out include this based on data that's collected over a certain month? I think that's something we can certainly act. I did like the fact that we can kind of help, they'll build out kind of what we need and train us going forward. And also, it's no different than like if we needed it, we have QuickBooks now, but like we called QuickBooks, we needed a training. We have that option to be able to do that. So I'm hoping that will be the, we'll make sure that's. So I'm hoping that would be the, but we'll make sure that's, that's for sign. We'll make sure those programs, that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, just like maintenance too, I know they said, we're going to help you as long as you need, but to what extent are they going to be helping with maintenance? Telling you what you need to do or would they have someone? We're, we're not technical experts, it sounds like, so how long are they going to be able to help us and to what extent?
It's actually, the subscription is ongoing, so.
So then we get that as part of the subscription fee?
That's my understanding of what we.
That, that is.
Because usually subscription you have levels, so I'm saying, is it premium? Like, I don't know, this is all I got in front of me is this.
No, I understand, excellent.
That, that is correct. Um, the, their budget system, you can do a whole lot of analytical analysis, that, that's, that's in there. The subscription itself, if, when there's an upgrade to the system, they automatically upgrade that without a fee.
I mean, I'm for it, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure.
I, I understand. Yeah, I understand your, 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 um, your questions and they're, they're good questions uh, because that's something I've been looking for, for the city since I've been here.
When we asked them at the end, um, as part of the contract, if it's possible, a lot of these contracts, they can make a, a manual that's specific to your training needs. So even if it's like, oh, you can go online and do that, no, they can say, we set it up for this reason. This is a handbook that you can use for a city. That should be easy for them to do, so if we can ask for that, uh, that might be helpful, especially because if it's ongoing services, they're benefiting from, of a current account. So I can't imagine that they wouldn't give us something that we don't have to keep constantly calling them.
Oh, certainly.
Self-pay, self-praying.
Certainly, I definitely will ask them that, because I'm quite sure that's available.
Okay, so the motion is on the floor for the approval of the finance budget management?
Now, if you could just explain to the citizens and the council, uh, the timeline if this is passed, um, that you're looking at?
We have um, requested of them to have this system in place by the end of the year, January first. You know, that's on their schedule to work to have this system operational January first, two thousand twenty-six.
Would it be, um, would it be a hard act if you ask them to do a presentation to the council? So that the council can, I know Mayor Porter was there at the presentation, Jones, but if, if. Right, something would, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to extend it, we don't want to extend it. No one is saying no, we're just saying, would, is it something that we can see besides this?
A demonstration?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Just to have a better understanding.
Yes, and, and um, we can definitely do that if, and if I had known that ahead of time, I would hopefully schedule it because it's, it could be ten, fifteen minutes, more than twenty minutes. You can set the time because um, I could have asked them to do that tonight.
That ask for when they, that ask for when they build up? Right now, we have information about who they are and what, are you asking for they, once they build up?
Ideally, I would like to know all the features so they can form what we ask, not only for the contract, I know that's, I know that's not our lane. However, here's my concern. We're making legislation, we're asking for all these things, and the system is going to do something. If we know what it is that the system do, we can create things that support the city versus having to keep coming back, or you need to do this, or even improve the policies. It's just going out of order. I think it should always be the case that if you're getting something new and it's doing a demo, we work, can't come back nine in the morning, we could give a demo and e, I don't know, email. I'm just saying, I think the thing that is the practice that we can do. So I'm not trying to hold this up to the question that was asked, whether it's features now, I think if they come, I can ask them personally. You did a presentation of what we already have, what's additional features? So no matter how you do it, a presentation would be helpful so that we can know how to move forward and support the budget process that's going to come up. If we can, you want to do it earlier, maybe we can help in that way.
The. I can contact them tomorrow, but in order for them to meet our deadline, you know, they would need a decision at some point because it's more than, it's a very thorough process.
We can raise a vote, we have a motion on the floor. We're just asking.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just asking.
So I, I can, I can definitely give them a call tomorrow and I can check with the city clerk and, and see when um, you can make that um, presentation. I mean, they usually work. So I can just uh, check with the city clerk so we can get a timeline and let them know that the council would like to see a brief demonstration. And if you have specific questions, that would be very helpful for me to send to them and they can really focus on your specific question. You more than well.
For your patience, we are not going to read the announcements because we're going to take a quick five-minute break for those that need to take a break. We're going to come right back in so we can go into the next meeting, is that okay? Five minutes? All right. We're going to adjourn now, yes, and we'll read the announcement then, nine forty-two.